So this board meeting of the Board of Education for September 22nd, 2020 is called to order. For tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being streamed live on PPS TV services and on Channel 28, and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Hopefully, you're enjoying the fresh air. Tonight, we have a very full agenda, and after tonight's meeting, we have a learning session for the board members. So tonight, in addition to voting on an amendment to the fiscal year budget for the 2021 school year, we will discuss a draft of the 2122 budget calendar and adopt the superintendent's evaluation framework. And then, like I said, we'll go to our study session where we'll have an opportunity to learn more about the district's climate justice and climate change curriculum, which feels, after what we've experienced the last 10 days, even more urgent, if that's possible. And then we'll also hear about the district's community engagement framework. But to begin tonight in recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, we will vote on a resolution proclaiming the celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month in Portland Public Schools. And it is vitally important that our Spanish-speaking students, families, and community hear our proclamation in their native language. And so often, as we do in our work, I have requested support from our Language Access Services team. The superintendent and I had talked about having each board member read a line in Spanish, and that is something we thought about attempting. But it felt good to honor Mary First Seeger and all the work that she does with this important team in PPS, and to show that it's not only our families that need translation services, but our board sometimes needs those as well. Mary First's team ensures that families always have language translation and interpretation services available. I also want to congratulate her on her recent completion and graduation from the Leadership Program with the Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber. So Mary First, on behalf of the board, would you please recite the proclamation?
Thank you so much. Good evening, everybody. Resolution, Resolución número 6173. Resolución que proclama la celebración del mes de la herencia hispana nacional en las escuelas públicas de Portland. Considerando que la semana de la herencia hispana, la cual comenzó en 1968 bajo el presidente Lyndon Johnson, fue expandida a mes de la herencia hispana por el presidente Ronald Reagan y promulgada como ley en 1988 para cubrir un periodo de 30 días a partir del 15 de septiembre, día que representa el aniversario de la independencia de cinco países latinoamericanos. Que los hispanos y latinos han enriquecido y formado positivamente nuestra comunidad, desde aquellos cuyas raíces se remontan a generaciones anteriores hasta aquellos que han llegado recientemente a buscar la promesa de los Estados Unidos. Ellos representan el espíritu de nuestro sueño americano. Que con el trabajo arduo y educación se puede construir una vida mejor para uno mismo y un futuro mejor para nuestros hijos. Que los hispanos y latinos hacen importantes contribuciones y continúan logrando avances en la educación, la medicina, el arte, la cultura, y el servicio público. Y han sido una influencia constante y vital en el crecimiento y la prosperidad de nuestra comunidad. Que más del 16% de los alumnos matriculados en las escuelas públicas de Portland son hispanos y latinos. Que más del 8% de nuestros empleados se compone de hispanos y/o latinos y contribuyen a lograr la misión de PPS en cada nivel dentro de cada departamento y división del distrito. Que nuestras escuelas honran y preservan los bienes lingüísticos y culturales de los estudiantes a través de clubes estudiantiles como MECHA y programas de enriquecimiento como nuestros recursos de inmersión lingüística bilingüe, estudios étnicos, teoría crítica de las razas, y la opción de obtener un sello de alfabetización bilingüe al graduarse. Que honran y enriquecen las distintas procedencias de nuestros alumnos que hablan español como un idioma de herencia, a la vez que exponen a los que no hablan español a las diferentes perspectivas multilingües y multiculturales. Que nuestro distrito y nuestra comunidad se fortalecen con el apoyo y la abogacía de las organizaciones como Latino Network, Hacienda CDC, La Cámara Hispana Metropolitana, Verde, El Teatro Milagro, y El Programa Hispano. Que reconocemos que cuando elevamos a los estudiantes, al personal, a las familias, y a los miembros de la comunidad hispanos y latinos, fortalecemos a todo nuestro distrito. Cuando creamos más caminos hacia la oportunidad educativa, proporcionamos la oportunidad para todos los estudiantes de alcanzar su mayor potencial. Que entender, reconocer, y promover las aportaciones de nuestros estudiantes, personal, familias, y comunidades hispanos y latinos es parte importante de la celebración del mes de la herencia hispana. Que el valor fundamental de la equidad racial y justicia social de las escuelas públicas de Portland es creer en el derecho fundamental a la dignidad humana, y que generar un mundo equitativo requiere un sistema educativo que interrumpa intencionalmente y que construya líderes para interrumpir los sistemas de opresión. Que la nueva imagen de las escuelas públicas de Portland, la visión de nuestro distrito y su estrella del norte, articula un retrato de un graduado de las escuelas públicas de Portland como un pensador crítico compasivo, capaz de colaborar y resolver problemas, y preparado para liderar un mundo socialmente más justo. Los graduados serán líderes de equidad transformacional. Los educadores se centrarán en la equidad racial y la justicia social, y el distrito escolar promoverá sistemas y estructuras alineados con la equidad racial. Que las escuelas públicas de Portland tienen una política de equidad racial que establece nuestro compromiso de superar afirmativamente las barreras educativas que han resultado en una brecha persistente e inaceptable para los estudiantes de color, y de dar a cada estudiante la oportunidad y el apoyo para alcanzar su máximo potencial. Que cerrar las brechas de oportunidades mientras elevamos el rendimiento de todos los estudiantes es la prioridad principal de la junta escolar, el superintendente, y todo el personal del distrito. Y que la junta escolar de las escuelas públicas de Portland cree que cada estudiante debe ser celebrado y apreciado por las distintas y vibrantes contribuciones que hacen al compartir culturas, idiomas, ideas, creencias, y valores dentro de la comunidad escolar. Se resuelve que la junta escolar de las escuelas públicas de Portland, por la presente, promueve el 15 de septiembre al 15 de octubre como mes de la herencia hispana y alienta a los miembros del personal, alumnos, y a la comunidad a observar, reconocer, y celebrar la cultura, herencia, y contribuciones económicas de los hispanos y latinos a Portland, Oregon, a los Estados Unidos a través de las actividades culturalmente relevantes, y a aprender del pasado y entender las experiencias que han formado a los Estados Unidos. Gracias.
Thank you, Mary First. Director Constan, would you please read the proclamation in English?
I would be happy to. Muchas gracias, Mary First. Resolution 6173 in celebration of Latinx heritage in Portland Public Schools. Hispanic Heritage Week, which began in 1968 under President Lyndon Johnson, was expanded to National Hispanic Heritage Month by President Ronald Reagan and enacted into law in 1988 to cover a 30-day period starting on September 15th, the day that represents the anniversary of independence for five Latin American countries. Hispanics and Latinos have enriched and positively shaped our community. From those whose roots trace back generations to those who have recently arrived to pursue the promise of the United States, they represent the spirit of our American dream. With hard work and in education, you can build a better life for yourself and a better future for your children. Hispanics and Latinos make profound contributions and continue to make advances in education, medicine, art, culture, and public service, and have been a consistent and vital influence in our community's growth and prosperity. More than 16% of enrolled students in the Portland Public Schools are Hispanic and/or Latino. Hispanics and/or Latinos comprise over 8% of our employees and contribute to the accomplishment of PPS's mission at every level within every department and division of the district. Our schools honor and preserve the linguistic and cultural assets of students through student clubs like MECHA and enrichment programs such as our dual-language immersion, ethnic studies, critical race theory courses, and the option to obtain a seal by literacy upon graduation that honor and enrich the diverse backgrounds of our heritage Spanish speakers while exposing non-Spanish speakers to diverse multilingual and multicultural perspectives. Our district and community is strengthened by the support and advocacy of organizations like Latino Network, Hacienda CDC, the Hispanic Metropolitan Chamber, Verde, Milagro Theater, and El Programa Hispano. We recognize that when we lift up Hispanic, Latino students, staff, families, and community members, we strengthen our entire district. When we create more pathways to educational opportunity, we provide the chance for all students to reach their greatest potential. Understanding, recognizing, and promoting the assets of our Hispanic and Latino students, staff, families, and community is an important part of celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. Portland Public Schools' core value of racial equity and social justice is that we believe in the fundamental right to human dignity and that generating an equitable world requires an educational system that intentionally disrupts and builds leaders to disrupt systems of oppression. Portland Public Schools' reimagined our district's vision and North Star articulates a portrait of a graduate of Portland Public Schools as a compassionate, critical thinker able to collaborate and solve problems and prepared to lead a more socially just world. Graduates will be transformational equity leaders. Educators will be racial equity and social justice-centered, and the school district will advance racial equity-aligned systems and structures. Portland Public Schools has a racial equity policy that states our commitment to affirmatively overcome the educational barriers that have resulted in a persistent, unacceptable gap for students of color and to give each student the opportunity to support, the opportunity and support to meet his or her highest potential. Closing opportunity gaps while raising achievement for all students is the top priority of the Board of Education, the superintendent, and all district staff. And the Portland Public Schools Board of Education believes each and every student is to be celebrated and appreciated for the distinct and vibrant contributions made by sharing cultures, language, ideas, beliefs, and values within a school community. The Portland Public Schools Board of Education hereby promotes September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month and encourages staff, students, and community to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and economic contributions of Hispanics and Latinos in Portland, Oregon, and the United States through culturally relevant activity, and to learn from the past and understand the experiences that have shaped the United States. So be it resolved.
Thank you, Director Constan. We're now going to vote on Resolution 6173, proclaiming the celebration of National Hispanic Heritage Month in Portland Public Schools. So I have a motion for this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second. I think that was Director Bailey and then Director DePas. Great. Director Bailey moved, and Director DePas seconds. The motion to adopt Resolution 6173. Ms. Bradshaw, is there any citizen comment on Resolution 6173?
No.
Is there any board discussion on this resolution? All right, let us go ahead and vote on Resolution 6173. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6173 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
Thank you. We now turn to our consent agenda. And board members, if there are any items you would like to pull, we will set those aside for discussion and vote at the end of the meeting. So are there any items anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda? All right, Ms. Bradshaw, are there any changes to the consent agenda?
It just came to my attention that the contract for Delta Connects has a typo in the resolution. The documents that support it had the correct amount. And so the resolution reads 2 million, and it actually needs to be three, which will need an amendment. There are no other changes, though.
All right, excellent. So who would move the amendment to change the Delta Contract Resolution from 2 million to the correct 3 million? Do I have someone that'll make that amendment?
So moved.
Moved.
All right, so I heard, I think, Director Brim Edwards moved it, and we'll count Director Moore's as a second there. All right, and so John, can we vote on the whole package, or do we need to vote on the amendment separately?
Amendment first.
Okay, we'll do the amendment first. So bring before us the amendment on the contract with Delta from 2 to 3 million. All those in favor, please say yes.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Student Representative Shu?
Yes.
All right, it passes 7-0 with Student Representative Shu also voting yes. And so now, who would like to move the entire consent agenda, including the amended Delta line?
So moved.
Second.
Director Constan and Director Scott seconds. We will, is there any board discussion on the consent agenda?
There is. So I, over the last two meetings, I have not necessarily pulled or voted against contracts, but I want to just flag my continuing concern that we're being asked to vote on contracts where we haven't posted the board memos, which are public materials, and that the performance goals are not yet set. And I've raised this the last two meetings, and I have had people ask me why I haven't voted against the contract, but I don't, why I don't vote against the contracts if I have a concern. But I don't really view this as at all the contractors issue. I think this is a district side of the issue that needs to be addressed. And I raised it with the Chief of Staff and the Deputy Superintendent for Business Operations. And while there's been a fair amount of back and forth, and it's still being worked on, I just want to flag that I'm not entirely comfortable that we continue to this practice into the, into the school year.
All right, any further discussion? I know that I have also spoken with folks around the contracts and continuing to find ways to both share information but also to protect the district, as we know, there was a fraud issue last year, and so trying to find this pathway of how do we also respect staff time and navigate transparency. So this is an ongoing conversation that we're having as board leadership also with our staff to make sure that we are transparent and clear in what we're agreeing to, and also, like Director Brim Edwards said, recognizing that this is a procedure and process kink that we are working out as a district and not a reflection on our contractors in any way. All right, seeing no more discussion, we'll go ahead and move on to voting. The board will now vote on Resolution 6174 through 6177. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? The consent agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
Excellent. I would like to leave a little bit of suspense in the way I asked that question, Nathaniel. So we're just ready to hear your response there. We have a brief moment to do some cheerleading for our bond. And so I'm going to invite Director DePas to share with us some of her joy and energy around the bond that is before us on the ballot in November. Michelle?
Thank you. Yes, so I'm going to talk a brief commercial here for our 2020 bond. I'm really excited to support this and be part of the creation of this bond for a couple of reasons. One is it's a renewal on the tax rate, not a brand-new tax rate. So it's a tax rate that we're already paying. It's a $1.2 billion investment that we can make as Portlanders without raising taxes, and I think that's really great. Additionally, we can invest in historically underserved Black community, particularly at the Jefferson High School, complete modernization of Jefferson, the development of a Center for Black Student Excellence, and investments in curriculum and technology improvements. I'm really particularly excited about the curriculum improvements because I think our history needs to be told from a 21st century lens. So this gives us an opportunity to make improvements there. Technology as well, COVID surprised all of us. This bond will give us the opportunity to make investments in technology to make sure all students have access to online and virtual learning platforms. And that's it.
Awesome. Vote November 3rd. Director Moore, do you have some thoughts to share about the bond?
Yes, I will continue the commercial. I'm very proud to advocate the passage of this bond on the November ballot. This is the third bond in a series starting in 2012 as part of a 30-year-plus plan to modernize all of our schools. This bond represents historic levels of investment in multiple areas that will directly improve the educational opportunities available to PPS students throughout the district. There's a lot to be excited about here. I'll talk about just two. First, with this bond, the district's alternative ed programs will enjoy a brand-new facility, the Multiple Pathways to Graduation Learning Center, located on the Benson High School campus. This facility will be designed to respond to the unique needs of students in multiple programs and will allow the unification of the Alliance High School program for the first time in many years. And then, secondly, I just want to highlight that with this bond, we'll be continuing the modernization of all of our high schools. With this bond, we'll be modernizing Jefferson High School, and it also includes planning and design for Cleveland High School, Wilson High School, and the extension to the existing Roosevelt High School in order to respond to enrollment increases. So this is a very big number, $1.2 billion, but we're going to be doing an enormous number of projects, and I strongly encourage the voters to continue supporting Portland Public School. Thank you.
All right, and when is Election Day? November 3rd. So your ballots will be coming. Make sure you sit down with your voter's pamphlet, look at them, and vote, and vote yes on the PPS bond. All right, we turn now to one of the most important parts of our gatherings, which is our student and public comment. Before we begin, I just want to review our guidelines for everyone. We are deeply grateful to the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and to provide your comments. Public input informs our work as a district, and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a board is to actively listen. Board members and the superintendents will not respond to comments or questions during public comment, but our board office will follow up on board-related issues raised during public testimony. And we request that complaints about individual employees be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have any additional materials or items you would like to provide to the board or superintendent, we ask that you email them to publiccomment@ppss.net. Please make sure that when you begin tonight, you clearly state and spell your name for the record. You will have three minutes to speak, and you will hear a sound after three minutes, which means that it is time to conclude your comments. And we respectfully ask that you do conclude at that point. Ms. Bradshaw, do you have anyone signed up for student comment tonight?
Yes, we have quite a few. We'll start with Caroline Recinos.
All right, Caroline, welcome.
Hi, thank you. My name is Caroline Recinos, C-A-R-O-L-I-N-E-R-E-C-I-N-O-S. Hello, PPS board members. I go to Grant High School. I wanted to talk to you today about the role you play in enacting climate justice, specifically in making sustainable choices for school lunches. As board members, you have the power and responsibility to make ecologically healthy changes on behalf of the Portland Public Schools. I understand that since the new school year has started, you are very busy. However, we are asking that you consider some new modifications. I should say that all of these requests are in reference to the school lunches. The information and statistics are found on the PPS website. Unfortunately, the only report is one from the 2015-2016 season, the Focus National District Procurement Report, PPS School Year 2015-2016. Accordingly, some of my information could be incorrect due to the fact that there is no information from recent years. Request says follows: Post a more recent Nutrition Services procurement report, unless one already exists, in which case it should be put somewhere more accessible and the old report removed. The report states that 32% of school lunches are locally sourced. If that number were to be increased, hopefully it would decrease the number of processed foods coming from far away and the amount of plastic packaging that comes with it. In 2015, 53% of beef was locally sourced, and only 5% was sustainably produced. We would hope that you could raise those statistics. In 2015, none of the cheese produced was sustainably sourced, which I hope could be improved. Also, I would like to understand why this hasn't happened before. In school year 2015-2016, you did increase the amount of chicken that was sustainably produced from less than 1% to 15%, but you lower the amount that was locally sourced from 2% to 0%. So I think that should also be raised. In conclusion, I hope you will consider discussing some of these points. We all have to do our part against climate change, and I hope you can use your power to create changes for the better and adopt a policy for taking action on climate change. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Tasman Higgs.
Yeah, hi. My name is Taz Higgs, H-I-G-G-S, and I'm a seventh grader at Da Vinci Middle School, and I use he/him pronouns. When you all were kids, did you ever have to worry about having a safe planet when you all grew up? I do. I have asthma and have been struggling with the forest fires over the past couple of weeks. When our house got too smoky, we had to evacuate to a hotel till the smoke cleared out in Portland. These fires keep getting worse each year, and the carbon emissions are rising drastically. One of the themes of 2020 is "I can't breathe." From COVID-19 to George Floyd to tear gas in our own city, and now the wildfires all make it harder for some people to breathe. 2020 is a warning to us that our ability to breathe, our survival, is at risk. These problems weren't caused by an unlucky 2020. They were caused by people not wanting to change. I know there's lots of problems in PPS that you guys are trying to solve, kind of like firefighters using your limited water to spray down the worst fires, but spraying down the fires isn't enough, clearly. It's not enough. Even my kindergarten cousin knows that we have to stop burning fossil fuels. The district could buy electricity from wind and solar. You could buy recycled paper instead of paper from cutting down trees. That seems easy. Instead of gas vehicles, you guys could switch to electric. Cafeterias could serve a lot less meat. From the carbon emissions it takes to make one single hamburger, you could serve 90 whole kids with the serving of just peas instead for the same amount of protein. Don't leave this problem to us kids to solve, because it'll just get worse by the time we grow up. Instead of just spraying down more fires in PPS, you can work together to prevent emissions from 81 whole schools. You have that power. You do. By passing on the Climate Crisis Response Policy. I hope you talk about this at your October policy meeting. The climate crisis is happening now. And if we all work together, we'll all be able to breathe easier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Luna Abadia.
Hello, my name is Luna Abadia. That is L-U-N-A-A-B-A-D-I-A. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm a student at Lincoln High School. I'm here tonight to urge that the I'm here tonight to urge that the PPS Climate Crisis Response Policy be discussed at the October 16th, 26th policy meeting. As a 16-year-old, I fear for my future in the face of climate change. This is why I decided to create the Effective Climate Action Project, an organization focused on increasing awareness of effective climate solutions through youth advocacy and leadership. Pursuing this project has helped me channel the worry I feel about climate change and turn it into motivation. However, I shouldn't have to be doing this. Teenagers shouldn't have to carry the burden of the lack of action taken by the adults in power. I'm actually speaking to you right now from Arizona, where we evacuated because the air in my house is too toxic to breathe. While skies have cleared in Portland and many will return to their lives, what we have experienced these past few weeks is a testament to what our new normal will look like. That is, unless we take significant and immediate action on climate change. The truth is, the conversation is rapidly changing from how to stop climate change to how to mitigate its worst effects. This is why the PPS Climate Crisis Response Policy is critical to our community's adaptation in this changing world. I find it astounding that the board has not yet brought it up for consideration. I understand that you are grappling, as we all are, with the many issues and important decisions this year has thrown at us. However, reviewing and implementing this policy demonstrates your recognition of the intersectionality climate change holds with racial justice, COVID-19, and wildfires. Schools are where so much of a student's values, abilities, and understandings are solidified. As the PPS vision statement says, quote, "A graduate of Portland Public Schools will be a compassionate, critical thinker, able to collaborate and solve problems, and be prepared to lead a more socially just world." Growing up in schools that actively work to create the lowest possible carbon emissions, facilitate green infrastructure and transportation, and teach environmental justice will help students see the possibilities of an environmentally responsible future. Please consider the PPS Climate Crisis Response Policy this October. This is just beginning. This is just the beginning steps towards the true climate action that we need. We cannot delay this any longer. And if I or others in my organization can help you in furthering this policy, we stand ready to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna Starman.
Hi, that's me. All right. So hi, my name is Anna Starman. Um. I, it's spelled A-N-N-A-S-T-A-R-M-A-N. And today I want to talk about the lack of art supplies at our school. Um, so I go to Roosevelt High School, and I'm a junior, and I go by pronouns of she/her. So my classmates deserve art supplies. Art should be valued at the same level as the sciences or math, things that are prioritized in our country over, over art. You know why art is important, and it's as the same importance as other subjects that are better funded. Art is an, as an extension of our creativity. It's how we are coping right now through all of this. Art is how we can express ourselves. I cannot express myself through my math work or research paper. Art is an expression of who we are, and my classmates are more than just these maths and, and research papers. And why are they valued differently? Thank you.
Thank you. Edme Bickley.
Um, pardon, uh, one moment. Hello, my name is Edme Getchow, E.D.M.E.G.U.E.T.S.C.H.O.W. And my pronouns are she/her. I am currently a senior at Roosevelt High School, and for a very long time in my life, art has been an intrinsic part of my self-expression. It has the ability to articulate happenstance that are outside of my own. It is something that I truly believe is vitally important. And we have the wonderful art classes at our, in our PPS schools. They are taught by amazing teachers, and they have students who are so, so passionate about them. But at this time especially, it is incredibly difficult to fully participate in class. From internet glitches to screen fatigue, everything is draining. I've found it hard to stay focused and to stay motivated. But truthfully, I cannot imagine how much that would be amplified if I did not have the ability to access materials necessary to my classes. Unfortunately, that is what a large part of my community is facing. Students do not have supplies to the, do not have access to the supplies that are needed for an arts education program. And a vast number of low-income families are having difficulty paying for their housing, food, and other necessities. They should not be asked to find money to provide for their child's education. At this time of crisis, it is an onerous burden to ask families to pay for their children's educational tools. And it will disproportionately impact families and students who are in an unstable financial situation. It is an equity issue. And, and teachers began this year with the hope that they would be able to provide students with the supplies that they need if they needed them. Unfortunately, due to the, the withdrawal of funds, they are now left scrambling and in the uncomfortable position of leaving students hanging. In my photography class that I'm taking this year, a class that we have not had access to at Roosevelt before, my teacher thought she would be able to provide cameras to students who did not have access to phones or other digital cameras, and she no longer knows if she has that option. Just like math, English, science, and history, art is an intrinsic part of education. It is a right, and access to it should not rely on financial situation. Our time at home right now, quarantined, is an opportunity to allow students the chance to explore art in their own homes to express the complicated thoughts and feelings that this global crisis and the months of isolation have engendered. But it will be wasted if students do not have access to the tools that are necessary to do so. Please, I implore you, some budget provision must be made for students so that they have equitable access to the art supplies that they need, and by extension, arts education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Rosen.
Hi, I'm Mike Rosen, R.O.S.E.N., and I appreciate the opportunity to comment. Superintendent Guerrero, Chair Lowry, and Board Directors, we are certainly living in trying times. Over half a year of social distancing, protests for racial justice happening across the globe, and now one of the starkest representations of climate change, rampant wildfires driving us into our homes. I had been thinking recently how the climate crisis had fallen off, out of the press and collective consciousness, only in the last two weeks to see it rocket into the forefront of the world's most pressing issues. To say the least, the sense of fear and hopelessness is striking and palpable. It is known, however, that an effective remedy for this is action, action that is as direct as possible. For the past year, the PPS Climate Justice Committee, which includes teachers, parents, students, community activists, and scientists, and the Eco School Network, has been working diligently with PPS staff, including all department management, and led by the district's sustainability team and a multitude of stakeholders on drafting a PPS Climate Crisis Response Policy, our remedy, our form of direct action. And we have made real progress. We are ready to engage the board with this work. As you may recall, the Climate Crisis Response Policy is a major revision of the existing resource conservation policy from the early 90s. Realizing that this policy was woefully out of date, we decided to start over and draft a policy that not only addressed sustainability broadly, but also connected the district's carbon footprint to the goal of significantly reducing global carbon emissions. With the help of PPS staff, we have addressed all major areas of district-wide carbon consumption and have developed a path to reduction, significant reduction to reach net zero carbon emissions by 2050. This means that we will look at both emissions and engagement and culture. Under the umbrella of emissions reduction and sequestration, the draft policy includes goals in the areas of operations, maintenance, and facilities, grounds and gardens, purchasing, transportation, new construction, and food. And under the umbrella of engagement and culture, we've outlined goals in the areas of campus action, communication, professional development, and climate justice curriculum, which aligns with the previous resolution. This was planned for presentation to the board's policy committee to discuss in April, but it was postponed, and we've requested again to present it in October. I am here tonight to advocate for the prioritization of this policy work for the policy committee, and then the board as a whole, and a subsequent implementation plan by staff of this policy. I have reviewed the draft Board Policy Committee Work Plan Discussion, September 14th, 2020, and know the Climate Crisis Response Policy is listed as content for future meetings, rather than a topic of the meeting itself. My request is that the policy be prioritized, and the Climate Justice Committee and the Eco School Network be invited to present their work at the October 26th Policy Committee Meeting. Thank you for your consideration of this request, and thank you to Directors Brim Edwards and DePass for already acknowledging this request and supporting this policy as priority Policy Committee. Thank you.
Sorry, can't find the dismiss button. Um, next, thank you. Next we have Jane Comalt.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jane Comalt, C.O.M.E.A.U.L.T. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. I'm a PPS parent, and I also serve on the Advisory Board for the Eco School Network, and I'm here in that capacity. The Eco School Network is an organization of parents promoting sustainable practices and raising ecological awareness in schools across Oregon. Our parent leaders are active in 51 PPS schools, volunteering their time because they want to support staff and students in reducing environmental impacts at school, and also to create opportunities for students to be active in building a brighter future. One of the things we frequently hear from our parent leaders is a desire to see district-wide action on climate change. This makes it a top priority for our organization. And over the past year, we've been working on a team to create a draft Climate Crisis Response Plan to bring in front of the PPS board and have dedicated significant time in doing the requisite research, writing, and meeting with district staff and other collaborators. We applaud the developments in climate change and climate justice curriculum at PPS, and we know that our youth feels the weight of a bleak ecological outlook for the planet. Collectively, we need to show students the concrete actions that PPS is taking to reduce its contribution to climate change and create opportunities for students to engage in that work. This will help graduates see themselves, in the words of the graduate portrait, "to be prepared to lead a more socially just world," and hopefully alleviates some of their anxiety about the state of the planet. PPS needs a plan, a Climate Crisis Response Plan, to get serious about the urgent need to take action on climate change, and the board needs to make it a priority in order to get there. The Eco School Network would like to thank Directors Brim Edwards and DePass for their support in making the development and adoption of a Climate Crisis Response Plan a priority for the board and the policy committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly May.
Hello. I don't know if I can follow those students. Um, my name is Kelly May, K.E.L.L.I.E.M.A.Y. Um, I, she/her pronouns. I'm a visual arts teacher at Roosevelt High School, and I've worked in the Roosevelt Cluster for the past about nine years. Um, I'm here to represent the visual arts teachers across the district and to support our visual arts students in these times that are difficult. Um, we have come together and made a statement that I did share, but I'd like to share at a later date with a lot of this, or all the correct statistics. Um, and in four business days, we've collected 320 signatures um, from people across the district in support of the statements, and I would like to read um, part of it and then some other same things to say. Um, and basically, there was promises made to support art materials, and right now, we do not have a lot of answers or any district um, support for materials at non-title-one schools. Um, so after Portland Public's decision to move to a remote learning environment for fall 2020, many district stakeholders and departments began working to find a solution so that all students could have access to the basic materials they would need in order to establish an equitable baseline for learning in every subject. The latest message is that Title I schools will qualify to have some materials, including art supplies, provided for those students in Title I schools. We greatly appreciate all the work that went into this effort, and in general, I'd like to say I greatly appreciate the arts being so much more supported in the last few years in Portland Public, and a shout out to our TOSA and Kristin, the head of our AP department. They've worked very hard on this and supporting us. Um, and I will say, many have shared that they're, um, in the Title I schools even. Those lists do not end up including the materials that we requested, and all the work went into many lists this, um, summer. Um, back to the statement, as no PPS high school is designated Title I, um, all of high schools have lost Title I status. Uh, these funds will not be able to provide support for visual arts at the 9 through 12 level, nor it will provide materials for students that qualify for free or reduced lunch at any schools in Portland Public. And right now, I will tell you that about 70% of my art students have expressed that they have either no materials or purely paper and pencil, and that has been commonly heard from other teachers in the district. Um, the materials in art programs are the instructional core for student learning. In a normal scenario, over the spring and summer, arts teachers and building administrators work very hard, very piecemeal approach, that is already very inequitable, to summarize that part, um, of asking for donations. Um, donors choose PTAs, and that is a wide uh, inequity issue already in the district that we'd like future work towards. Um, but we were told to put all of that on hold and asked not to make any progress towards funding for this year, as we were told the district would provide materials for students in distance learning. Um, and as another teacher's mentioned, that we feel hung out to dry. Um, especially in remote learning environment, there must be a system in place to ensure equity in student access to basic supplies. As teachers, parents, and community members, we ask the district to provide basic instructional material um, to 912 students designated for, as qualifying for free and reduced meals. Um, we recommend a $50 per high school student, which is actually low when we've done all the research in the numbers, but we're looking for that, and 30 per middle school student, 20 per K5. Um, visual arts help foster creativity, keep kids in school, problem-solving, and even more so now, the much-needed time away from screens during distance learning. Please don't allow students in these programs to be undercut at this moment when we have never needed support more. I know this is an extremely complicated issue with more complex solutions that I'm putting forth, um, but I also see it as an amazing opportunity for us to truly reflect on how and where to make necessary change to show our historically underserved students they matter, and that they deserve as quality of an art-making experience as anyone else attending this public education institution. Um, what we are suggesting might not be the best solution, um, but a district's solution is needed, or best, um, excuse me, sorry. Um, I would really like, and I know my, many of my colleagues would like to get back to the core of our job of supporting, teaching, and inspiring students, I will say with along all the challenges coming up in distance learning. Um, and I'd really like to see, my hope is that the district will focus on the responsibility of getting children what they need and what they deserve. Um, please help us support our students, and I would like to forward to that email address, the statistics. We have 320 people, 250 at least, to which I've added their names. Um, and I have also a statement from a parent, if I'm in my three minutes. Um, art acts like, art a kind of therapy for my daughter. It holds her world together. Without it, she is a growing plant without the sun. In her almost three years at Roosevelt, I have seen her flourish academically and personally. Her mind has expanded in all directions merely for having the nourishment of a proper art education. It is imperative that she continue to receive that education, for it is her chosen path towards adulthood. As a community struggles to see kids through to graduation, I hope that no aspects of the education they are currently receiving would be seen as unnecessary, as that goes against the very task you have sworn to uphold. Please support our students and help us get back to our jobs as teaching. I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, Kara Colley.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Kara Colley. That's K.A.R.A.C.O.L.L.E.Y., and I use she/her pronouns. I'm a parent of an Ainsworth 4th grader and a West Sylvan 7th grader, and I'm here to speak about the middle school schedule, remote And I'm here to speak about the middle school schedule, remote schedule. First, after the first week of learning, I'm very pleased with my fourth grader's remote schedule. He has three to four hours of live synchronous instruction per day, Monday through Friday. Sometimes he's working with the whole class, sometimes in small groups. My son is working hard. He struggles sometimes. We struggle, but he's learning and he's engaged as best he can under these very difficult circumstances. I have been, to put it mildly, very disappointed with my seventh grader's remote schedule. This, I'm talking about last week. On Monday, she met for forty-five minutes with her period one, period two and period three teachers. On Tuesday, she met for forty-five minutes with period five, period six, period seven teachers. On Wednesday, she met with one teacher the whole day, like a half an hour with one teacher. On Thursday, she met only with her advisory homeroom teacher. And on Friday, again, she met with one teacher. Let me tell you very clearly what this asynchronous learning on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday looked like for her. She was alone in her room, looking at her laptop, trying to do her work, frustrated, and I would say most of all sad to be by herself. On Sunday, we received an email from one of her teachers that quote-unquote senior leadership has told teachers they are not allowed to hold whole-class live meetings on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday. So even if a teacher wants to hold a meeting on Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, they are not allowed. I was feeling lucky that one of her teachers wanted to teach her on a Wednesday and one of her teachers wanted to teach her on a Friday. And now I learned that this is forbidden by senior leadership. I don't really know what senior leadership means, but so what I really can't understand is the difference between the middle school and high school schedule. Friends with high school students tell me that their students receive live synchronous instruction on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday mornings. So why are middle schoolers being singled out for less live instruction than their elementary or high school peers? Please, if middle school teachers want to meet with whole class or with the whole class in small groups for live instruction on Wednesday, Thursday and Friday, please let them. My kids don't need fancy asynchronous lectures, fancy slick asynchronous PowerPoint. They need their teachers to check in with them from Monday to Friday. They need to interact with their peers and teachers every day. Please, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have Colleen Ruland.
Hi, my name is Colleen Ruland, R E U L A N D. I am actually perfectly timed to follow the last parent who spoke. I have a child in high school and a child in middle school. And they have been previously amazingly engaged, loving public school. They've been in Portland Public School since kindergarten. And their experience is exactly what she just described. The only live inspection instruction they have is a half a day on a Monday and a Tuesday. And then it's completely videos and having to look at a computer and self-motivate Wednesday through Friday. These are kids that have been isolated from any type of community since March and who haven't had engaged learning since March. I am deeply, deeply worried about how this actually meets ODE criteria. And I am deeply worried about the impact, lifelong impact that this is having on children and their engaged learning. I know that these are difficult situations, but we have to be doing better than saying that one-third of a twelve-year-old's education is live, interactive and with other students. I ask you to please put curriculum and education as a priority because children are being harmed and they're suffering. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Jennifer Edler.
It's Edler, E D L E R, and she/her. Okay, I'm here to ask you to prioritize the climate crisis response policy proposals soon. And I speak on behalf of my colleagues at Beverly Clary School. It would be great if twenty twenty was an anomaly. But scientists suspect in twenty thirty that we will not look back. That we will look back, not with despair, but with regret, that we didn't do anything to heed the warning. The wildfires, pandemic, political movements and strife, the awareness that we're on a precipice and we need to change means at this moment is a call to action. Investing in clean energy will not be cheap, but we don't have the luxury of time. Educators spend time accessing academic resources for students' future. Let's do what we can to access green resources to make sure that future is full of opportunity. Our students are stressed and anxious and not sure how to prepare. As we also focus on equity, we need to remember that it's a frontline communities of students of color that will be most impacted by the climate crisis. So we are adding to that gap of opportunity and access. We are not properly addressing the risk around the climate crisis. The pandemic was acute, but the climate crisis is chronic and it needs immediate attention as well. Scientists are hoping this difficult year wakes us up. Our students, learning from home, are hoping that too. No more excuses, we need action. We appreciate PPS's leadership in climate matters. Our students have access to climate science courses. And just this year, we arrived to find copy machines automatically are set to double-side copy. This matters. Changing behaviors is key. But on the other hand, continuing to ask staff to print hard copies of documents seems antiquated and wasteful. Recycling bins are hard to find and often unlabeled, leaving, leading to contamination. And right now, empty buildings could be audited for energy efficiency. Supply rooms stocked with recycled materials. Keep in mind, our PPS buildings are mostly vacant, but they are using a precious energy for the few who are working there. Shouldn't they be working remotely as well? This committee lists fairly cost-effective things we could do now. Depave and green up campuses, reusable trays and utensils, abundant, clearly marked recycling bins, free student bus passes and safe pathways to school. All staff should be educated on the crisis and new policies, just as they were with pandemic protocols. If we use less, we can't afford recycle options. We need to make our, make being green our ethos at PPS. We ask that we start implementing more impactful long-term decisions like LED lights, energy star appliances and heating by building partnerships with community members. These proposals put forth by the committee will significantly decrease carbon emissions as outlined in the twenty eighteen IPCC climate report. We would like you to also be transparent about the carbon footprint for the district, including transportation. Our students sees, our students see our hypocrisy as parents and education leaders. They want opportunities, equality and a clean environment. Let's invest in their future like we should. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes everybody that we have signed up for public comment.
Thank you, everyone, for sharing tonight. Just to let you know, we, as a board, have already received a memo about art supplies. We know that the climate justice policy and policy committee are talking to one another. And we also, it's like, what was the other one? Oh, middle school schedule. We are meeting and talking about adjustments to the middle school schedule. So thank you for sharing those perspectives and reiterating your viewpoints. And know that there is movement happening in all of the areas that was brought forward for public comment tonight. So keep on sending emails and speaking and bringing forward your viewpoint to know that the, the district is responding. And Laurie. Yeah. May I say a few, go off protocol and just thank the people that are here. I have a comment I'd like to make.
Sure.
So I just, I want to thank the people that came and testified for climate emergency and sustainability practices. And also for the visual arts tools. I'm a, I'm a supporter of both. I benefited greatly from all of the art training I got at Irvington School, at MLC, of course, and at the Fashion Institute of Design. And, and, and I believe it's part of a, a well-rounded curriculum. The climate change emergency right now is so real. You know, we experienced the fires and, and all that stuff. I want to thank those folks that came from the climate and sustainability communities and also want to just put a call out to recruit and elevate people from frontline communities to be the voice of this movement. That's what's happening on the local, national and international level. And we can do that in Portland here too. So I just, I want to say that, that I'm a big supporter and will do what I can to push these policies forward. Thanks. All right, we move on now to student representative Shu. Nathaniel, would you like to share your report with us tonight?
I would, yes. And let me just say beforehand that I agree with everything that Director DePass just said. Anyway, first off, I would like to update everyone on how the beginning of the school year has been going. Starting this year was always going to be a complex and difficult process, what with the considerable task of adjusting to online learning. However, the challenges of the past few weeks, such as wildfires, smoke, power outages and downed trees, have complicated this process further. As a result, many classes are now only commencing in earnest with two teachers truly beginning to cover the content of their courses. For many of, for those of us at Jefferson, fall term Portland Community College classes begin this week as well, with many students having had their first virtual class either yesterday or today. For this term, we are permitted to enroll in classes worth up to a total of five credits. Personally, I'm enrolled in a full-credit class on metaphysics and epistemology, which begins tomorrow. Additionally, I would like to note that although we are a number of weeks into our current school year, students continue to face a wide range of issues related to distant lo- distance learning, from the inconsistent or unclear locations of course materials to platforms such as Canvas and Synergy failing sync. Next, I would like to remark upon the goings-on at the DSC. The DSC has decided to undergo its own sort of soft start program for many of the same reasons as our schools did, with the additional hope of allowing new members to join relatively seamlessly. In effect, this means that we are refraining from taking on any new non-essential duties until October and temporarily slowing our work on ongoing projects such as our board policy, amending our board policy and writing bylaws. However, we are moving forward on adding new members to the DSC. In the coming days and weeks, Jen and I plan to reach out to student government advisors and or school admin of those schools which do not currently have representation on the DSC. That is to say Lincoln Wilson, MLC, Alliance at Meek, Alliance at Benson, Pioneer and possibly Grant, with the goal of walking toward democratically electing a representative to the DSC from each of their schools as board policy. And I believe that concludes my report. Thank you.
Here, Laurie.
Thank you, yes.
I was just gonna say, before we move on, I'm wondering, Nathaniel, if at some point this fall you could organize a student roundtable that we could hear from, directly from student experiences about sort of the comprehensive district learning mod- module. I think it would be really informative to understand what's, what's been helpful, what, what's working, what's not. And just hear directly from students. I'm hearing a lot from parents, but a little less from students.
Director Brim Edwards, could you send an email sort of outlining what you're thinking to Roseanne and I so we can add that to our agenda setting meeting tomorrow?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Nathaniel. And I'm super excited to hear about, was it metaphysics and epistemology, your class that you're taking?
That's correct, yes.
I am excited to hear what you're learning there. All right, superintendent. Would you like to share with us your report about what's been going on these last two weeks and longer?
Director, staff colleagues and everyone who's tuned in this evening, watching on the live stream, good evening. Buenas, buenas noches, buenas tardes. The learning continues. And I'm counting on our, our staff to, to show the slideshow if they're not there. We're, we're on day seven of, of our instructional schedule. This is, this is after a two-week soft start that prioritized building those student and teacher connections, making sure there was ample time for professional development for our educators, getting familiar with learning technology tools and, and resources. And also taking the time, important, to identify the social emotional supports that, that many of our students might need. Given the constraints and the circumstances under which we're working, the first seven days have generally gone smoothly. Though I'll be the first to admit there, we're still troubleshooting a number of areas. I'm thankful as well to parents and staff who have provided feedback. We recognize that this distance learning experience isn't going perfectly for everyone. But I'm glad that we're identifying what the challenges are and we're doing our best to resolve these as best we can. We have been able to take care of many of the initial technology needs with the rolling distribution of laptops and, and hotspots. And we'll continue to address concerns that come into our telephone technology helpline. We're also hearing a range of feedback regarding the student learning experience as well. We'll continue to calibrate the balance of class schedules so that they are a, a, a good combination of direct instruction or synchronous learning and independent learning time or asynchronous time. Of course, this is a new way of teaching and learning and it's dramatically different from our usual delivery model. We're attempting to strike the most age and developmental, developmentally appropriate balance. And we're also taking a continued look at how best to meet the needs of our middle school age students, for instance. And I heard those comments earlier clearly as well. So we're, we're going to continue learning and adjusting as we go, knowing we've just completed our seventh day. And even in, in best case scenario, comprehensive distance learning, you know, won't be a substitute for face-to-face instruction, but we're certainly going to try to maintain a continuity of learning. Our commitment is, is to provide the best possible learning experience for students while making sure that they feel those important connections to, to their teachers and, and to each others. And there's a next phase to, to this work as we settle into our instructional calendar. We are simultaneously working on the next phases of a gradual reopening of schools. We remain focused on published health metrics and the guidance of the county and our medical experts in, in, in addition to Oregon Department of Ed guidelines as we start to contemplate introducing limited in-person opportunities. While we're anxious to have all of our students back on campus, we're going to continue to proceed in a measured and prudent manner that prioritizes the health and safety of our students and our employees. Our ability to fully open classrooms is dependent on those health metrics in Multnomah County specifically, which is really dependent on our community following good practices, including the wearing of face covering. So we should probably manage our expectations about how soon we can reopen our school buildings, even if for hybrid or cohort models, as conditions will dictate when we're able to, to move forward. In the meantime, there will be opportunities to bring in smaller groups of students for things like assessments and outdoor enrichment activities as well as offerings out of our family resource centers. So as always, we will only roll out in-person opportunities when we believe we can safely do so. Student and staff health and wellbeing remains our highest priority. Families and employees can expect to hear much more about our expansion of student in-person opportunities over the next couple of weeks. Thank you to our directors for your proclamation this evening, recognizing Hispanic Heritage Month. As a young man, I had the opportunity to travel to the very steps of the church in the small colonial town of Dolores, Mexico, where in eighteen ten, El Padre Miguel Hidalgo rang the church bells and gave the call to arms, triggering the Mexican War of Independence. So un ruidoso grito a todos los mexicanos. And we know that Latinos or Hispanics are a rich and diverse group. So today, more than ever, our schools serve and belong to students and families tied to the traditional land of indigenous people, to families who were unjustifiably taken from their native lands, to people who saw this country as an opportunity to, to thrive. So I joined the school board in celebrating, recognizing and acknowledging the beauty, the rich history of the Latinx community. This month is both of professional and personal importance to me as the first Latino superintendent of Portland Public Schools, as a Chicano. as a Chicano, a Mexican-American, a child of an immigrant mother and a paternal family that has lived for generations on land that at one point in history was claimed as American. So I often reflect on the gratitude I feel for the journey and sacrifices made by our antepasados, or our ancestors. So we carry the responsibility to celebrate the struggles, the determination and accomplishments of this beautiful and diverse community. This month, we celebrate the heroes that paved new roads so that we too can continue the cause and charge of preparing every student to lead change and improve the world. And if that phrase sounds familiar, it's the vision defined by our broader community for our children and youth. So while this month gives us an opportunity to pause and reflect, we must today and every day continue to celebrate, recognize and acknowledge the rich history, culture and strength of our Latinx students, families, community members and educators. And it's important to recognize that simultaneously, there exist many intersectionalities in a diverse Latino community, including Latinos who also identify as Black and Indigenous. So we continue our community effort to make real our commitment to our theory of action and the broader Black Lives Matter agenda to acknowledge and recognize that Black and Indigenous Latinx contribute greatly to our rich culture. So as we celebrate, recognize and acknowledge the Latino community throughout the next month and every day, I hope that you join me in learning about and illuminating the way in which Afro-Latino and Indigenous communities help make our community more rich, beautiful and resilient. So because of the joy of our community that comes from the diversity of our people and as such, we have this moral responsibility to create these conditions so that every one of our students thrives. This is especially true for our Black and Afro-Latino members of our community. So today, I'm excited to join the Board of Ed in recognizing Latino or Hispanic Heritage Month and committed to again, living up to these additional important words, Black Lives Matter. Feliz Dia de la Herencia Latina. In just a bit, we're gonna adjourn this regular meeting of the board to hold our first study session of the school year with directors. These study sessions are intended for staff to provide a more in-depth understanding of key initiatives and strands of work in PPS. This evening, staff will be sharing and having an interactive dialogue with the board on two topics, our community engagement framework and our evolving climate change, climate justice curriculum, which I'm excited to have you hear about. I will have something to say about both these items in that meeting, but given the all-too-real and recent display of climate change here in Oregon, I also wanna address that matter now, too. We're all familiar with how we're confronting a global pandemic, struggling with the economic crisis that's ensued and attempting to come to terms, especially here in Portland, with a racial uprising and injustices. And if this weren't enough, horrific wildfires in Oregon and other states have caused so much damage and unfortunate loss of life. This past week, I had an opportunity to hear from my colleague superintendents around the state that really have been tragically, had their communities severely impacted. And my thoughts go out to my colleagues and all those families and communities that really, in some cases, have lost everything. More locally, the choking smoke covered our city for a week, disrupted all our lives, not to the same extent. But in each of these scenarios, we understand that the pandemic, the economics, the racial uprising, the wildfires, they have a disproportionate impact on communities of color. And we also see the harm caused when policies and practices deliberately affect one group over another. I was dismayed frankly, making the observation this past week that the air quality conditions were deemed too hazardous for construction workers to work outdoors, but not considered hazardous for agricultural workers to continue working outside in the fields all day, all week. So, I don't know, is there something different about the air that's breathed on construction sites versus the air breathed on agricultural fields? Or is it about something else? So a cruel reminder of how racial injustice intersects with issues related to climate justice. The existential threat of climate warming is still here, still happening. It's a threat that will not go away unless and until we demonstrate the will to make it go away. So, and as educators, we have to continue providing our students with a clear and science-based understanding of climate change. I invite all of our teachers to begin integrating our newly developed climate justice coursework and units across all grade levels. We all need to demonstrate the will to solve this problem. I know our students have that will, I know this. And with the 2016 Board Resolution, PPS began to create space and opportunity to cultivate student education and action with regard to climate science and climate justice. And here's some ways that PPS is operationalizing that commitment. We hired a programs manager for climate change and climate justice, Nicole Berg. Nicole's gonna walk us through and be our teacher this evening as she walks us through our study session later this evening. We developed a climate justice elective at the high school level. It's a course that now our students will have access to. In addition, are developing a comprehensive and standards-based K-12 climate change and climate justice units so that all of our students begin to deepen their knowledge across grade levels. And there's much more and we know we have much more to go and we want to operate with as much urgency as possible. To our students, you have my continued commitment and the commitment I know of our board to provide you what you need to carry out this mission of learning and action, but know that we're not leaving it completely to you to solve this massive problem. My generation and the generation before me are responsible for our situation. And even with all the student energy in the world, we also know our teachers play a critical and central role in our success. So I wanna say to our educators who, in the midst of seemingly endless challenges and changes and new variables brought on by distance learning, there are many priorities I wanna make sure we continue to still spotlight. So Superintendent, I want to encourage you to start. We have a number of online tools for teaching your students about climate science and climate justice. Reach out to your curriculum leaders, your principal, your teaching and learning team at the central office and take a look at what we've posted there at pps.net/teacher. Please do it quickly, do it this week. Climate change won't wait for any of us. Climate justice is racial justice, climate justice is social justice. To our students, you know, we're not gonna stand by idly. We're ready to support you and partner with you as you take an ever-expanding role in solving this crisis that threatens frankly, the entirety of our planet and humanity. So we look forward to sharing more with you about those lessons and units of study in our study session later. And that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you, directors.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right, we are moving now to our budget. And this past June, the board adopted the budget for the 2021 school year. And at that time when we adopted the budget, the legislative session had not been held and the district brought forward a budget that was built on estimated funding levels based on the 2019, 2021 biennial budget issued by the Oregon Department of Education on February 26, 2020. And this included an expenditure allocation based on anticipated revenue shortfalls. Now, since then, a second legislative special session was held on August 10, 2020. And this budget amendment that's before us tonight will align resources and requirements with the most current state legislative revenue allocations. So Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this item before us?
Yes, Chair Lowry, that was actually a pretty good setup there, but I'm gonna invite Deputy Superintendent Claire Hertz if she wants to add for the reason for the amendment this evening.
Thank you. First, I'd like to begin with introducing our Director of Budget, Nicole Basson. Her camera is, of course, at the last minute giving us grief, but I just wanna acknowledge Nicole and her team and the work that they've done in tracking a most difficult budget process year. And they've done exceptional work and I applaud all of their efforts in especially reconciling from what we adopted in June and what we bring before you as an amendment. So in the amendment, there are two funds, general fund and our special revenue fund that have adjustments. In the general fund, you'll notice that the beginning fund balance has been updated to reflect the June 30, 2020 ending fund balance. And it does include our carryover from furlough savings and our purchasing and hiring freezes. And on the expenditure side, we have moved some expenses that were formerly in the student investment account and the special revenue into the resources available in general fund to, so that we're staying, remaining at the same staffing level. And we've also had investments in instruction and support services area to support the comprehensive distance learning and hybrid education models. So things like PPE, technology, cleaning supplies, software, classroom and school setup for when students return. In the special revenue, we have what has been allocated through the special session. We've had to reduce the SIA in the special revenue, but then it's been offset in the general fund. We also have several grants, both state and federal, in terms of elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds, ESER, FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency funds, and then of course, the comprehensive distance learning grant. So that all of those are being utilized to help offset the costs of running school during a pandemic. And with that, we, staff recommends that the board pass the proposed resolution to amend the 2021 budget.
Okay. I, just flipping between the script and the Zoom is apparently too much for me sometimes. Thank you Deputy Superintendent Hertz. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6178, Amendment to the Fiscal Year 2021 Budget for School District 1J, Multnomah County, Oregon?
So moved.
Okay, I think that was Director Scott and Director DePass, so I'll give it to Director DePass moves and Director Scott seconds the resolution, the adoption of Resolution 6178. Is there any board discussion?
Yes, this is Rita. I have just a couple of comments. One, there are a few typos in the resolution, they're not substantive, but I think they probably ought to be, for clarity, they ought to be fixed. And then, I think, I just wanna point out, and don't check my math here. So it appears that Measure 98 funding was funded at 63% of the original estimate. And SIA was funded only at 32% of the original estimate. But my understanding is that the investments that we committed to under the SIA funding allocation, we are going, we're standing by those commitments, using money out of the general fund budget. Is that accurate?
So when you compare our adopted budget to what has been allocated through the special revenue, we received more in general fund than we had adopted. So we staffed at a low, excuse me, we did adopt at the full funding, but we had lowered our allocations because we anticipated reduced funding. That that money came in at full funding, so we had more additional resources available in general fund. And then in SIA, we had been told to be funded at a certain level, so we staffed at that level. And then we found in the special session that we had received less in SIA funds. So to keep the same level of staffing, overall, we were $20 million to the good. But we needed to move the expenses from one special revenue fund to the general fund in order to have the authority to spend where the resources were allocated through the special session.
Deputy Superintendent, sorry, this is Chair Lowry, Director Moore. So my understanding is that the staffing levels are what we initially approved. We're just shifting the buckets where the money came from based on what the legislative allowances and allocations were, which was different than we had predicted because our crystal ball's a little broken. But we still have, you know, the correct funding. The same staffing. Sorry, Director Moore, if you'd like to continue.
Yeah, the only other thing is, so we're, we're ending up with a bit more money than we had anticipated. And we're leaving it in reserves in anticipation of some continued economic and fiscal distress in the, in upcoming years, correct?
Yes, we're anticipating lower revenues in the next biennium, the next two-year period. And we are leaving those monies in reserve. Plus, we still need to get through a pan, you know, through the pandemic for the rest of this year as well. So between those two things, we have lots of reason.
Okay, thank you.
This is Director Brim Edwards, just a clarification also along that same lines. So at the end of last year, we had some furloughs as well. I'm wondering if you can tell us what last year's budget that we actually expended after some of the reductions had been made? And then with this amendment, what the overall budget is? The number?
So, last year, we projected that we would save $19 million in, based on furloughs, purchasing and hiring freezes that occurred between March to June. And we did hit that mark and we did have carried that forward into 2021. That's why you're seeing a larger beginning fund balance for the general fund. However, we are carrying that forward, if you will, into the next biennium to help offset those costs. And your second question, Director Brim Edwards, was?
I'm sorry, my first question was, once you took the savings, what did we actually spend last school year? And then with this budget amendment, what's our sort of all-funds number? I don't have it right in front of me.
I don't have the number for last year's total budget spend, but we can get that to you.
With the Student Success Act, whether the money went into the SIA or the, into the larger general fund of the state, we still, we're actually receiving an increase, which is allowing us to make some critical investments.
So overall, we have $30 million more. We've spent 10 or 11 million on the pandemic-related needs for a one-to-one device ratio and hotspots for internet connectivity. So we have made some expenditures due to the pandemic and then we're also, so 30 million more, 10 million we've spent and 20 we're setting aside, hopefully to the next biennium. The other thing is we will have preliminary financials for our first quarter and the ending, which will also reflect the ending of last year at our October 6th board meeting.
So the revenue forecast tomorrow, we should get some more data. But long-term, we should have, knowing that we have some one-time or maybe two-years expenses related to COVID, but long-term, we should be able to be building a base of supports through the student investment account and then also just the general underlying funds.
Yes.
All right, is there any further discussion on the amendment that's before us? Sorry Nathaniel, did I see you raise your hand there? All right, Student Representative Shu, what question or comment do you have?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry if this is a bit of a rudimentary question, but I was just wondering if there are any areas in which funding would be decreased as the result of the passing of this amendment and not as the result of external, external sources of funding decreasing?
So the only area that we have reduced was in where we didn't receive the SIA funding in the special revenue fund. So everywhere else has been additional resources.
And passing this amendment tonight, Deputy Superintendent will not change any allocations. It just, it continues the same funding levels, but just moves money from one sort of funding source or moves staffing from one funding source to another.
That's correct. So we are maintaining what was adopted as staffing levels in budget allocations in June. What we adopted then is being carried forward and continued by, by this budget amendment.
Is there any further discussion? All right, let us go ahead and move forward on a vote for this item. We will now vote on Resolution 6178, amendment to the fiscal year 2021 budget for school district one J, Multnomah County, Oregon. Call in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6178 is approved by a vote of seven to zero with Student Representative Shu voting.
Yes.
Excellent. All right, we're going to continue on with our theme of budget. Superintendent Gara, would you like to introduce this next budget item?
Yeah, I know that Deputy Hertz and the team put a lot of thought into the timeline for how we begin to jump into the development process for, for next year's school budget. And we're anxious to hear what those forecasts are. We don't expect them to be rosy and will continue to operate under constraints, which is something public education is used to doing. But I know that Deputy Hertz has put together a proposed calendar. So Claire?
So each year, our, we bring to our board a proposed budget calendar for your approval. And for tonight, we're just going to present it to you and get feedback from you. And then it, you also have the opportunity to send feedback over the next week in, in email form if there's changes you'd like to see. But the, what we'll want to do is bring it back on your business agenda for the next board meeting based on, on your feedback from this meeting. So we anticipate the next, next year's budget to base, you know, we'll have more information as Director Brim Edwards mentioned. We have a quarterly economic forecast tomorrow at the state level. So that will help guide us in terms of what the governor will be building her budget on. That includes the state school fund, which is our largest source of resources. So we really are, we've left our budget process to where we're wanting to leave it as late as possible so that we can realize the most information as we're recovering from a recession. So having said that, we start with this fall with, we have a community budget review committee that we're looking for members. So we'll be working on getting the board to approve our calendar and getting our CBRC membership and getting full membership there. And then we will be looking to get draft budget goals from the board in December. And then, and again, that will be where we're looking at, you know, what are you wanting us to maintain as a fund balance? We have been able to grow it, but we need to think about, we'll be bringing some modeling to you and some scenarios to show what happens over the next three years based on what happens with funding at the state level. So we're building those models for you to bring back later this fall. And then when you get past the initial financial goals, then it turns to time for the superintendent to build, start building his proposed budget. We'll be working on our strategic plan at the same time and finalizing that. And so all that will get tied together and come back in March. But we'll have a joint work session with the CBRC and the board to review our strategic plan and a multi-year business plan to get us through the next biennium. And once we've given you some of those main strategies and the investments we're hoping to make, then we'll go into where we're publishing our official notices into the proposed budget that will come out on April 27th. We'd come back and engage the community again in the beginning of May. And the CBRC would bring a report to the board middle of May. And we're asking the board to approve the budget on May 25th. Again, we then would publish a notice and hold the TSCC hearing. And that would be on June 15th, we would adopt the budget. And so that's what our proposed timeline is for this next year. Again, we push it out as late as we can so that we can utilize as much information as we can based on it being a legislative year. With that, I open it to any questions or comments from the board?
I'm not sure if that person's speaking, but I have a couple comments. And I want to thank Deputy Superintendent Hertz for the work on this budget calendar. And it's such a relief not to have, well, you know, fingers crossed, a super compressed timeline that we almost have a month between the introduction and the board's first approval. So I have, so thank you for putting this together. I think I would have three comments. One, if there's any way to have it be at least a month, it just still seems not a long time for the board to have a $700 million budget. And then second, we have one, and I know that's required by law, the sort of public engagement session. And last year as part of SIA, we had some great focus group discussion, community focus group discussions about the budget that I thought allowed us to hear some different voices. So, and I don't know if that has to be formally built into the calendar, but I thought that was really useful last year. And then the third piece is, given that the vast majority of the budget is allocated to staffing, it would be useful to see when, and this, I know this generally precedes April, when that staffing is going to happen so that we can see what the major, where the, the big chunk of the budget, at least the broad outlines, and I think the superintendent has done this in the past, were the broad outlines of how, what 80-plus percent of the district funds are going to be spent in terms of staffing and how that fits into the timeline. Because by the time we get to April, actually, the vast majority absent some board action is done. So that, that would just be another helpful thing, I think, for the community and, and board members to see when that approximately is happening and sort of what the broad outlines of staffing is.
Claire, I, this is Director Constam. I don't know if you're going to respond there if I jumped in or I have just a couple questions?
Please go ahead.
So first, I wondered, was this proposed calendar built in consultation with the CBRC and/or have they, have they reviewed it?
I would have to turn to Director Budget Nicole Basson to see if that has occurred at this point. I know that they are aware of the joint committees, joint meetings with the board. We'd want them to do the one around the strategic plan in March as well as the proposed budget and hearing the budget message from the superintendent. So they are aware of both of those. But specific dates, I know that their Chief Financial Officer Cynthia Lee has been working with them and she has helped draft this calendar. And I just wasn't in attendance to, but I can confirm that for you.
Okay, it's not so much specific dates that I'm concerned about. It's just the amount of time allotted for activities and their review and all that. So I would be interested in hearing that. And then my other question or just wondering is really thinking about our board goals and the student achievement aspirations that we have. And it would be nice to maybe build in a particular session where we're talking about the budget proposal just in context of the board goals. I think the superintendent did a nice job of framing the budget last year, you all did, relative to our vision. But it would be helpful, I think, for us as a board to see what strategies are identified and how they're resourced that are important to moving us forward on our board goals. And that might mean a particular work session devoted just to that, or it might be sign of some kind of a key or a legend that accompanies the budget proposal.
So that initial, first, the beginning of March meeting, that's the intent of that, is to tie the strategic plan to a multi-year business plan of what we're investing in. And that will be, it'd be a precursor to what we're bringing in the actual proposed budget. So we would, we would have some initial work there to share with you at that point. But I, I do hear what you're asking for. And certainly, we started with that work last year. And as we complete our strategic plan and, and roll that out, we look forward to having alignment to the district goals and the district adopted by the board and, you know, tied with the strategic plan and the budget all into one big package with a bow on it.
Any further comments before we move forward on voting for this item? Rita?
Actually, this is just a.
We're not voting, we're voting next week. Any further comments before we move on to our break? Have their selves unmuted, so let's do Rita first and then Andrew.
Okay, so kind of following up on, on Amy's question. So I was comparing this draft budget with last year's draft budget. And last year's budget was, the calendar was somewhat more detailed and included a lot of, a lot of meetings for CBRC. It just included it on the, on the draft budget. So is there, is there a particular reason why those meetings are not noted on this calendar? Has it just not been determined yet?
So there are two meetings that will be joint CBRC board meetings, and those are both noted. One is on March 9th and the other is on April 27th. And then also on May 11th is the CBRC would bring their report to the board. So there's three times that the CBRC.
Okay. And I, I had a, a question about the two meetings in December around financial goals. And then in March, the meeting on the strategic plan and the multi-year business plan. So this is the first time, I think, that we'll be looking at budget goals or financial goals. Is that accurate? I don't think we've done that in the past, have we?
So this is a, a good practice to ask before we are developing our proposed budget is to really look at what is the, it's the time for us to have the conversation with the board. What are we hoping, you know, here's some modeling that we've done here, let's look at the next three years. And what does it look like if we spend right at, you know, the, just maintaining the same fund balance? What if we want to spend it down 1%? What if we want to increase it 1%? So that we can show you what happens over time when, when you do that. And so I think that our financial team has not, in recent memory, brought multi-year projections forward to help the planning process. But that's a best practice. And it's something that we now have the capacity to do this work. We are fully staffed in the finance area, which, as you know, a few years ago was not the case. And so by having a full staff, we're able to develop these models and bring forward more data and information to you as a board so that you can help guide our overall budget goals as we prepare a proposed budget for you to bring back in, in the spring.
Yeah, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm not questioning it in any way. I'm pointing out that this is, this is new and I think it's, I, I think it's a good thing. So thank you for that. I am wondering though, so that discussion happens in December, but we don't get to see the multi-year business plan and the strategic plan until March.
The month of January is when we'll be working as an internal staff team to start really, we, we have the, where we're building the parts and components to align to the strategies and the strategic plan. So it's all coming to culmination there in January. In February, then we roll it out into models so that we can outlook at allocations to individual schools and looking at staffing. So that really is a, quite an extensive process in a large budget. And then by the first week in March, we're bringing you our best thinking. And also, you know, we're completing that strategic plan work and bringing that forward with you, to you with hopefully a multi-year plan for making investments. So it does take time to do that. You're giving us the information we need in December and it's taking us two months to build that. That's correct.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Andrew, did you have something to follow up with?
No, I just appreciate that budgeted options on June 15th. That happens to be my birthday, which is, might be the best birthday present I have ever received. And for those of you who think I'm facetious, you may not know me very well. So I'm very excited about that calendar. Thank you.
Always good to own your budget nerdiness. All right.
Love it.
Anything before we move forward to our next item on the agenda?
I would like to say that I hold out hope that those meetings in late spring, Claire, will indeed not be virtual and our children will be back in school and we will be back together.
Yes, may it be so.
Girl can dream, can't she?
Yes. All right, we are going to, we are way behind schedule, but that's okay. We had amazing robust public comment, which is super important. But we also need to tend to our bodies and brains and it's been more than 90 minutes. So I'm going to invite everybody to a five-minute break. It's 7:53 right now. We'll come back at 7:59. Please stand up. I know some of you don't, but it really does make a difference in your ability to think and react. So take a moment, stand up, stretch, and we'll be back in five. So take a moment, stand up, stretch, and we'll be back in five. On to voting on the superintendent's evaluation. I'm going to invite Director Scott, who led our process, to introduce the item to us tonight.
Great, thank you. Water, cookie, and a cat, right? Haley? So I know we're a little behind. I will move pretty quickly so we can get to discussion on this matter. So just sort of a reminder in terms of where we are in the overall process. So one of the things that the board does is in one of our main functions is actually evaluating the superintendent's performance during the year. And so in the fall, we adopt a template. And the goal of that is to be a collaborative process with the superintendent in terms of setting those goals. And then in the spring or sort of after the school year, we evaluate superintendent. Last year, and I think for the first time, the board adopted student-centered goals around for the superintendent's evaluation. And this was based off of a pretty lengthy process we went through, including working with Council on Great City Schools to set student-centered goals and really use those as the basis of that overall evaluation. We also, and so we adopted those board goals. There were four of them. Third grade reading, fifth grade, third grade math, fifth grade reading, high school readiness and post-secondary achievement. And we also added five of the Oregon School Board Association standards as well for last year's evaluation. So as we discussed two weeks ago at our board meeting, going into this year, things are a little bit different. The goal coming out of last year had been that we would use those student-centered goals for a number of years. However, with the onset of the pandemic and COVID-19, the goals that we had set unfortunately need to be reset. And so there's a lot of uncertainty in terms of how those student-centered, frankly, how the students are going to perform in an online environment. And so one of the things as we went through the early stages of this process was sort of understanding that that baseline was going to need to be reset. And as a result of that, we don't actually have the data that we need to set a goal. We will, in fact, still be using those student-centered goals. And we will throughout this year be reporting on the data. We'll be talking about it. We as a board, I hope, will be, you know, talking about the impacts, whether there's been improvement, whether there's been a lack of improvement or sort of regression on those and what those means, what those mean. But it is difficult to use those as part of an evaluation, given that lack of baseline data. So a couple of weeks ago, we talked about what the alternatives were. And the proposal put on the table was to go ahead and use the entire Oregon School Board Association template for superintendent evaluations. There are eight metrics overall. And we walked through what those eight metrics were and some of the issues. And so coming out of that meeting two weeks ago, there were some comments from board members and some questions and issues. And so I'm just going to go very quickly through what those were. Coming out of that board meeting, I took those comments and the conversation. I went back to the template that the Oregon School Board Association has put together. And in my view, the actual, the template that they put together, which they did revise this year pretty significantly, answers a number of the questions that board members raised. So let me go through those quickly. So one of the questions that came up two weeks ago was that board members wanted to make sure there's a solid connection between the education side of the district and the facility side. This is something that Director Bailey, I know, has raised last year and probably previous to that as well. And when I went back and looked at the OSBA leadership, the template, one of the things included in Leadership Standard Number Six, which is around organizational, effective organizational management, is that the superintendent will effectively organize and manage operational aspects of the district, including finance, HR, food services, transportation, underline maintenance and facilities so that students can attend and learn in quality environments staffed by quality professionals. In addition, the evaluation criteria includes as a metric for accomplished it notes, puts in place systems and staff that create environments that inspire learning that are highly reliably safe. So it seemed like there was a potential connection there between the learning side of what's going on and the facility side. Another comment that came from the board was that ensure that we're reporting on and focused on disaggregated data, particularly for our Black and Native students. And one of the things that this template, again, was revised pretty significantly this year. And OSBA added quite a bit of racial equity into the existing template. In Leadership Standard Number Three, which is inclusive district culture, the standard includes evaluation criteria that address this issue of disaggregated data. It specifically notes that data is regularly disaggregated in reporting and planning documents and extends beyond state and federal reporting requirements and includes where appropriate and possible disaggregation that supports understanding of intersectionality. In addition, the Oregon School Board Association artifacts section of the template. So they have a whole document that goes with this. And as part of that, they include what they call artifacts, which is kind of a funny term, but ways to sort of gauge overall performance. It includes the following. The evaluation should use data from a variety of sources to inform planning, management of resources, impact instruction and close achievement gaps, including disaggregated by subgroups and groups of interest. There was also a comment two weeks ago about making sure that we are centering, we as a board and as a district are centering racial equity and social justice and everything the district does. And one of the things, as I mentioned, this revised template, and this is something Russ Brown pointed out as well. I think when you go through the eight different leadership standards, they've done, OSBA has done a remarkable job of including racial equity and a really explicit focus on racial equity throughout in a way that I don't think existed before. And when we talked about these standards last year, that was one of the comments that had come up. And I was pleased to see that OSBA had added quite a bit in around those issues. Another board member had asked a question about whether we should use sort of the entire OSBA template, including some of the appendices as part of the evaluation process. I don't know if board members had a chance to go through prior to this meeting, but the overall document, the template, is pretty thorough and comprehensive. And it does include a number of sort of these concrete artifacts that can be used at the end of the process as we go through it. And so I think that is something that as we, as we get to the end of the year, when we're doing our evaluation, we can definitely refer back to in terms of our evaluative process. And then there was also a question about what other Council of Great City School districts are doing, given the absence of baseline data. In a moment, I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent and his staff, if they have anything to say about other districts. It is worth noting that not all districts have adopted student-centered goals. And that was something that, again, we did last year. And I think some districts are moving in that direction, but that is not common practice, or I guess I would say it's not universal practice across all school districts. And then the final comment we had from board members was how do we ensure that course, that things are going, how things are going and can we course correct if things are going poorly? And one of the things that I think the OSBA template actually recommends is quarterly performance check-ins with the superintendent during the year. And I think this is something that we should discuss as a board. We, I actually can't speak traditionally. I can only speak to the last year. We did not do quarterly check-ins, but I do think it's an interesting question about whether there's some value in doing check-ins regularly about the performance standards. So that, again, if things are going a little bit off track, we can begin to talk to the superintendent about resetting that course. So today, with that sort of summary, so again, this was just my view and going back through some of the questions that we got from board members, it seemed like the template addressed a number of those. What we want to do today is open it back up for further discussion. The goal, again, is to hopefully adopt a template today. But obviously, there's a lot of questions, you know, we can delay that if needed. I think what Director Lowry, Chair Lowry, has pointed out is that if board members have specific issues or concerns, sort of noting what they might want to change in the evaluation template that's in front of us, specific language changes or amendments, so that we can get towards a final document. I will just sort of wrap up to say, just, you know, in summary, this is not an ideal process, it's not an ideal year. And I think all of us, you know, we did a lot of work last year, spent months developing the student-centered goals that we adopted as board. We would have liked to prefer using those. We are planning to come back and use those again in 21, 22 school years. So this is really, should be viewed as a temporary measure. And really, the question for this year is, as a board, what do we want to use to gauge, you know, the progress of the district and the superintendent so that we can return to those student-centered goals as part of next year's process? With that, maybe Chair Lowry, I'll turn it back to you to open it up for conversation or actually maybe see if the superintendent or staff have any comments about what other districts are doing.
Okay, I think we actually have Director Constan and Director Brim Edwards are going to share about some of what they know other districts are doing. Unless Superintendent Guerrero, did you have something that you wanted to share about any other districts?
I'll defer and then chime in afterwards.
Perfect, sounds great. Okay, so the first thing we need to do is bring this formally before us. So we need to make a motion and second, to adopt Resolution 6179, which is the adoption of the superintendent's goals for 2021. Do I have a motion?
They're moved?
Second? Okay, so I was asking for a second, not seconding it. Sorry, that was confusing. So Director Constan moves and Director Scott seconds. Okay, is there any board discussion about the superintendent's evaluation?
I'm happy to respond to the question that came up about other districts. And I also think it'd be interesting to hear from Dr. Brown because I know that he's talked to some of his peers around the country to see what they're doing in this regard. But we have a weekly meeting of Council Great City Schools representatives, usually anywhere between 2025, different districts represented, large urban school districts. And in the conversation last week, Andrew's correct that most districts have not yet tied their superintendent evaluation instrument to student achievement goals, even though it is considered best practice and most want to get there, most are not there. So didn't get a lot of feedback in that regard. There are a couple of districts that are looking at still keeping some, some different student achievement metrics tied to to the evaluation instrument. I think our friends in Philadelphia are planning to include a couple of those. But then really, the main takeaway was that this is a year where it makes sense to de-emphasize that, even though it is where we ultimately want to be focused on. But what is required to deliver education this year is so dramatically different than what any normal year would entail, which is, you know, the understatement of the century, that it is important to look at what has the superintendent had to do to basically stand up the delivery model in a 100% new way. So that was the main takeaway. And also just that even though our assessment, you know, our data is going to be different, our assessment tools are going to be different. There's a lot that's very suspect about the assessment tools. People have questions about the equity of assessments being administered remotely and students have vastly different environments in which they'll be taking those unproctored tests. There are a lot of people who are sort of anti-assessment altogether. But the takeaway was we do need to still keep our eye on where our children are. We develop new metrics, but we want to be able to measure student growth this year. And I think even though we are rightfully de-emphasizing the student achievement metric for the evaluation, we are still keeping our fidelity to our board goals and to monitoring student achievement and to, you know, getting a sense of where our kids are and how they're learning and whether they're progressing through the year, through this year. So that was really all that I had to report from those 20-plus member districts. But Dr. Brown, I know you've been, you've been talking to colleagues as well.
Yes, I took a moment to reach out to a couple of colleagues. One who is the Director of Research for the Council of Great City Schools, Dr. Ray Hart. He's worked in research for well over 20 years in K-12 as well as higher ed and has been engaged with the REL Consortium, ran his own research and evaluation network, et cetera. He is a colleague that I have known for well over a decade and somebody that I turn to for advice and for his insights into the sort of the national perspective on that. As you had described, Ms. Constan, you know, the research teams have been meeting all summer as well on a weekly basis. And they've been grappling with assessment issues and the place of assessment as we move forward. And in the conversation with him, one, I was impressed with, you know, that our evaluation framework that the board created and adopted last year, I think is relatively unique. And one that, you know, I look forward to being able to carry forward and provide data and accountability framework moving forward in the coming year. But he was very clear, as, you know, I sort of anticipated that many systems, most frankly, are taking a hiatus from accountability associated with assessment. So as you indicated, in the Portland community, there are diverse opinions about assessment. And we're going to be doing some assessment this fall. And we really want it as an opportunity for parents and teachers and students to have some sense of where they're beginning the school year and how we can align time, resources, and professional developments better meet their needs. Across the country, about close to 90% of parents have expressed some interest in understanding where their students are starting the year. We want to give them that opportunity. We want to give them that opportunity. We also understand. That it's not going to be uniform environment, so we're, we're describing as not even low stake assessment, but no stakes assessments. The idea being, again, can can we gather some data that helps inform where we are? And that helps us move forward and plan for students. But Dr. Hart was very clear that he didn't think that in either of the assessment consortium across the country. That it made sense to move forward that. Using assessments for accountability purposes, be that for teacher evaluation, some systems do that, we clearly do not. Principal or superintendent evaluations, and he is. One of the most premier measurement experts that I would would turn to across the country. On the other hand, I also spoke with Dan Gordon, who is. You know, the legal and policy advisor for the consortium of large suburban and county districts. They represent another one point eight million students across the country. And Beaverton, for example, is a member of that consortium. As is Charlotte Mecklenburg, which actually bridges both, Charlotte sits in the Council of Great City Schools as well as the consortium. Dan was in a similar place, and again, these are two folks who have national views across multiple systems. And in both cases, you know, they they saw a diversity of ways folks were were approaching this, but. Were pretty clear that it did not make sense to to connect the dots to accountability this year because frankly, the assessment data. For all the reasons that you've outlined. Doesn't support that, because again, these are, you know, vastly different environments for kids. So it's great for planning, it's great for us to be able to align and help help our students as we move forward. But it does not make sense from anchoring to a high stakes or accountability decision making. Thank you.
All right, I know Director Brim Edwards and Director DePass talked to some other school boards today. Did you have any insights you wanted to share from those conversations?
Director DePass, do you want to go ahead or do you want me to?
You can go ahead, I I'll talk about some just, you know, amendments I'd like to bring forth.
Great. Yeah, I have an amendment as well, and I. Do you want me, sort of my comments and the reaction by the districts is sort of wrapped up into?
Well, if you would like to, if you'd like to make an amendment, either of you, that's fine. I just know you had had a conversation today and was creating a space. For you to add that into the conversation, but we can go ahead and move on.
Yeah, I can, I can wrap it into.
Do what you want to do.
Yeah, just I'll wrap it into. My comments about the amendment, if that's okay. Do you want me to, do you want me to do that or now or?
Nodding vigorously, I am sorry, I, that wasn't clear, but yes, go ahead.
Okay. So I've got an amendment I'm going to send to. Sorry about the challenge of being in a virtual environment, I'll send it to Kara and Roseanne and they can. Distribute it to the board staff and hopefully post it or screen share it so people can see it. So. And this, this amendment is based on a discussion that I had today with. Several of the board members, some of the districts. But I want to start by saying, thanking Director Scott, because while he might get his birthday wish to have a budget passed by the fifteenth. Getting assigned the evaluation template in a year in which. The the leading up through the process in a year in which we've faced multiple challenges, I think. Maybe is a bigger challenge and not necessarily. Fair to to give you, but I hope you get your birthday wish. Anyway, I wanted to, as I mentioned at the last board meeting, I was interested in what other districts are doing. And I was particularly interested in districts that had developed board goals related to student outcomes, both proficiency and or growth. And had linked their superintendent evaluations to the student outcome, so as Director Konstam mentioned and Director Scott, most districts. Haven't. Made that. Made that connection between, I think what is there mostly their goal and their mission and their work, which is improving student outcomes, but connecting that to the superintendent's. Evaluation. So as all of us know, two years ago, we started developing our board goals related to student outcomes with really a focus on black indigenous and students of color. And I want to acknowledge the leadership role that Chair Moore played in that and sort of the board's pivot. As well as Chair Konstam last year, who oversaw the process in which two thirds of the superintendent's evaluation was based on. Student outcomes for. BIPOC students. So the the evaluation that we have. Before us, as Director Scott explains, defers the student outcomes, goals and expectations as part of the superintendent's evaluation until next year. And I had a conversation with AJ Cravill, who was the consultant from the Council of Great City Schools, who. Worked very closely with the board in developing our board goals and our focus on student outcomes and shifting our meetings to have a greater focus on student outcomes. And ask him what other districts that he had worked with, again, were a bit unique in. There the subset of districts who've made this connection. So his, his response was now's, his, his point of view was now is not the time to leave our student outcome goals behind the student in the superintendent evaluation. And he provided an introduction to two other districts that. Either have already in previous years linked superintendent. The superintendent evaluation to student outcomes or who were actively in the process of doing that, and so today I had a chance to. Speak to. Six board members from two different districts, both Houston. And Philadelphia, so large urban districts. That have worked with the Council of Great City Schools and also with AJ Cravill and essentially they, we, the discussion centered around. Sort of wrestling with this issue of, you know, how do you keep your focus on student outcomes in the COVID environment and. Their general consensus was. That they were going to continue to embed. The student outcome goal, growth goals in the superintendent evaluation. And the major adjustment that they were going to be making is to acknowledge that the baseline is completely different. And that. Their expectation is at school districts, they're still going to be focused completely on. Student outcomes and student learning, because, you know, this could be a. Four months, it could be a twelve months, or it could be a two year, and the sense that really they felt that. It was important to continue to keep the focus on that, but make adjustments. So not high stakes, but make make adjustments in what the expectations were, and they both were kind of in somewhat. Slightly different places, Houston is way ahead of us in terms of adopting, they have a very rigorous Lone Star Governance. Model that they use, and Philadelphia, I would say is we're a little bit ahead of them. So, you know, when I looked at what. Wanting to recognize that we're in this hybrid year again, like somewhat we were at the end of last year when we. Were did the superintendent's evaluation, but to continue to use the, sorry, my computer's about ready to die, continue to use the. Some of the leadership standards, but also not let go of our. Student outcomes and that we use a new baseline and, for example, Houston, what they've decided was they're going to. Like make up the loss is the expectation, so you had this period of the spring and then. You know, the summer or six months where kids, you know, essentially in many cases didn't have instruction and make up that loss. And then use that as the launching pad for twenty one, twenty two. So what I have, and I don't know, Roseanne or Kara, if you have the the template.
I have what you sent over.
If you have an amendment, just put it forward and we can discuss it and see if.
Okay, so that's, that's what it's a, you have to visually see, it's a chart.
Just a second and I'll share it.
So essentially, the amendment would be to substitute. These pages for these slides for the slide number ten in the current. Assessment and it would still have. Student performance growth as a metric with a focus on BIPOC students as part of this targeted universalism. There'd be, need to be evidence of growth without a specific target of how much growth.
So let's, um, let's get that amendment before us and so.
So as you can see here, the first page essentially is similar to the page number. Seven, I'm sorry, page number ten, that's already in the evaluation, and then if you go to the next page, there is a. You know, a pretty simple. Set of student growth metrics where it's just growth or no evidence of growth or no evidence of growth. And then the final page would be a combination score similar to what we did last year, so. It would be maintaining our focus on student outcomes, but not and on growth without a specific target.
Okay, so you're bringing this amendment before us to make these changes, is there a second to this amendment?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this amendment? I, I would say that I am not in favor of this amendment. I am in favor of keeping our goals at the forefront and focusing on those, I think we as a board have deeply committed to that. I don't know that we will see students grow this year, we may see students decline, I think we all know that. This, everyone, I mean, teachers are working like crazy, I know our admin is working like crazy. To make online learning as successful as possible, and yet we all know that this is not how students learn best. And so I think we may see declines over the course of this year as online fatigue sets in, as we deal with anxiety. Based on what happens in the election in November, so I don't think we, in this crazy unpredictable year, I don't think we can hold even the idea of growth. As a fair evaluation of the effectiveness of the superintendent, so I will not be voting in favor of this amendment. Are there any other?
Can we? Ms. Bradshaw, can you shift back to? We're, we're page off, and so I haven't been able to really. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, go, go ahead, Director DePass, sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it would be important for us to track this, but perhaps not use it as. As as a part of an evaluation, like a performance evaluation, knowing what we know about, you know, the things that Director Lowry just shared, or Chair Lowry, excuse me. But I think it's important to track, to track where we are. It gives us additional data points. I don't know that it's fair to hold anybody in the system accountable for declines that we know are going to happen. This year, just, you know, I I'd personally rather see a focus on social emotional well being for everyone within the system. Rather than hard targets on, you know, are you meeting third grade math, are you meeting fifth grade math, eighth grade? I do think it's important to track it. It gives us more information for the, for the next pandemic that comes. Should we be unlucky enough to experiencing that, to experience that and. And it gives us, it gives us information that we may need to move forward, depending on how this pandemic. And explicit, we'll be tracking everything and we will be getting regular disaggregated data, we'll be getting at least quarterly reports from Russ on where we are. So we can track it. But so thank you for that, Director DePass, that will definitely be happening in this part of the commitment. Other comments on this amendment before us?
Yeah, this is Director, oh, sorry, somebody else wants to. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, I have a slightly different view, I do have expectations of student growth for for all of our students this year and. But where my concerns lie are, you know, if we're talking about accountability, my first. Priority right now for accountability is accountability of what's being provided to our students. And the university, uniformity of what and how it's being provided, because what we are hearing. Like much of our public testimony tonight, is that all of our students are not getting anywhere near. Similar, even even amount of content, let alone quality of instruction, and there's been a great deal of work put into. You know, creating a quality curriculum that's available for teachers. In virtual learning and we seem to have great variability right now in even how much. Live instruction is happening, even though we we have set very clear expectations about that. So I want to see us work really hard to make sure that all of our students are getting an equal opportunity in that respect, and then just the other nuance that's important to me. Is that I think this notion of the. Reliability and equity, equitability of. Our assessments and students' environments that they're being assessed in is very, very real, and I. I believe we should still be doing assessments, whether it's individual teacher formative assessments that track growth for their own classes, or whether. You know, it's other larger scale assessments, but. I think we can't fool ourselves into thinking that we have a reliable. Set of assessment tools that's going to give us comparable data.
Maybe just a response to that, Director Konstam. So I think you've hit up on, you know, really important point about how and. The, the tools and the platforms and the curriculums that every student has. I guess when I look at sort of the, from a governance role. That the measuring the how is sort of measuring the the board getting into sort of like how the superintendent's doing. This job versus like however they do it, since the superintendent is the. Actually, the, the educational leader of the district that what we're measuring is, is the what versus. How they're doing it, and I have to, you know, trust, I may ask the question about how it's being done, but the. The, the how is not. The end outcome that we want for our students, it's the what or the student performance of the growth. So that's, that's the only reason why I presented it that way, because you could create a set of tools to measure. You know, how many students have accessed online or, you know, or, you know, how many classrooms have the curriculum and how many.
Director Brim Edwards. I'm gonna, in the honor of time, I think we've had three speeches against and your speech for, do we have any other people who want to speak for this amendment?
I want to speak against it.
Okay, can you be really briefed?
I, I can try.
I'm just gonna remind us, I'm gonna remind us that we all said, I'm gonna say, remind us that we all said at our board retreat. We were going to be better about not just repeating what other people said and chiming in when points have already been made, so. I'm gonna hold, try to hold us to that as we have this conversation tonight, it's important that we all can speak and share our viewpoints, but we also need to to be productive. So I'm going to trust you, Director Moore, in this space.
I, I will try to live up to that trust. I, I appreciate Director Brim Edwards making the distinction between the what and the how. And that our responsibility is around outcomes rather than. Deliberating on strategies. But in our, in our attempt to evaluate the what. We have to be concerned about how we are doing that. And I think a critical problem that really cannot be overcome is. We, the only way we can assess the what is of necessity. Deeply flawed under these circumstances, and I think completely unreliable. So attaching any evaluative. Importance to, to the results of. I think we're talking about nap testing, which is new to the district, it's new to students, it's new to teachers, so we, we don't even, we're still rolling out. I think we're talking about nap testing, which is new to the district. It's new to students. It's new to teachers. So we we don't even, we're still rolling out the testing.
Right, Director Moore, I think you made your point about that piece. And I I hear you getting into your full flow there. So I just want to say, is there anything else that you wanted to add that you didn't get a chance to say?
Nope.
Chair Lowry, I want to just say that the this discussion, I mean, being on time is really important. It's how we keep things moving. And this is one of the most important things that we do. It's like one of the things we actually have agency over. We have two things we do as board members. And I feel. Please let me finish.
Okay.
I appreciate that. This is one of the most important things we do. This is a crazy year. No one's expecting. Traditional growth curves this year. And I think it's really important as board members and as community members that live here. That we have the time to have a discussion regardless of what says on the clock. This is one of the things that we actually have agency over and is one of the two things that we do as board members. And I think that it's respectful to give it the time that it needs rather than rushing it through. It's a bad look for us if we rush it through. I believe voters and constituents and people stakeholders in this community. Deserve to a fair hearing on on what we're deliberating. I think it's this is like the this is what democracy looks like. We don't have to all agree. But we have to agree to to provide a space for discussion.
Correct, and that's why.
Keeping us on task is not providing the the necessity for rich discussion that I think that the evaluation deserves. It's my opinion, I'm one person, but I wanted to share that.
Yes, well, I asked if there were, we had had, I was trying to create space to have equitable discussion. We had had three people speak against the amendment, and so I asked if there was anyone who wanted to speak for to create that space. And again, I'm gonna take us back to our board retreat and some of the conversations we had about the ways that we are. Sometimes dysfunctional is that we we get into the weeds and we repeat our points over and over. So I'm trying to hold us to that. Conversation we had and and I do want to create space for robust discussion. And if there had been someone who wanted to speak for the amendment. That, of course, would have happened uninterrupted, but because we've already had now four people speak against. It's the question is, are we really having a robust discussion or are we each? Speaking to our own sort of need to kind of have screen time. And so that's that's kind of my as chair trying to navigate that to make sure people are heard, but that we also are respectful of the public that are watching. And are respectful of the staff and of one another. Because I think we also still have amendments from you coming ahead, and we want to make sure we have space and time and brain power to fully consider all the amendments before us. So are there?
And and as someone who does not take up a lot of floor time, traditionally, I've probably talked for two to. One hour in the time I've been on the board. And and this is an important issue to me, and I just, I think it's important to be heard that way.
Did you have?
And I want to speaking for myself, by the way, I'm speaking, you know, I'm I'm trying to bring input forward that I hear. From community members and interested stakeholders.
Did you want to speak for this amendment, Michelle?
No, but I I don't also want to be chopped off at the at the ankle either when we're having rich discussion. I want to hear from everyone that's that's in the room that has an opinion on it. Not to be rushed forward.
Is there any further discussion on this amendment?
I have a question for Russ Brown. Dr. Brown. So when you talked about. Or there's the current evaluation, the way that it's. Written, it says that we're reaffirming, I don't have it right in front of me, but we're reaffirming our commitment to student outcomes and we're going to get quarterly. Reports and it sounds like part of the the promise here is that we're going to have the data. We're just not going to hold the superintendent. Accountable. I mean, that's that's what it sounds like. We're not going to put it in his evaluation. So I'm. Wondering from you, like, when when would we have that first pass of the data? Are we going to have it for all of our four board goals? And then we're going to get it at four. What I'm hearing. Where leadership say or this embedded in this is that we're then going to get, we're just going to get the same data. It's just going to be disconnected from the superintendent's evaluation. I'm just asking a question because that's what I'm understanding. I'm being told.
Actually, I I want to jump in because I think that's a that's a mischaracterization. Before Dr. Brown, before Dr. Brown answers about when the data will become available. Your characterization that we're we're disconnecting this. The issue, the issue, Director Brim Edwards, is whether we can set a goal. And I think with all performance measures, this is one of the key questions. And I'm going to use an analogy that I thought of last week when I was choking on smoke. And it's an air quality analogy, right? And so, you know, in a normal time, the air quality that I want is like 20 AQI or less. I think most of us have been checking those AQI sites, you know, pretty religiously. And, you know, if I were setting a goal for the DEQ and for the governor, I would say, yeah, you know what? I think we should be achieving like 20 20 AQI or less. However, when the air quality was 400, I would have settled for 200 in a heartbeat. Like, that was such a dramatic, you know, difference that that would have been something that. I would have welcomed a 200 day versus the 400 day. But we were in the middle of a wildfire and something was very different. The pandemic is a wildfire for education. And so the question is not whether we're disconnecting these things. The question is, and 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 I want to just go back and reiterate what we said two weeks ago and what I said tonight. This data will be available. It will be transparent. It will be publicly put out there. In terms of how our students are doing, we are not moving away from that board goal whatsoever. The only question. Is whether we can set a goal for the district and therefore the superintendent in terms of what we expect that growth to be. What I haven't seen in your amendment, your proposed amendment, is any sense of what that goal should be. So what you have here is growth. We all want to see growth. And to the extent, I think all seven of us are very clear about the fact that we'd love to see growth. Recognizing that in this pandemic, in this virtual environment, we may in fact not. So this is, I want to separate out like what's going on in the district is separate from our responsibility as a board is here with the superintendent's evaluation. So I just want to make sure that we don't mischaracterize.
I'm just, I I'm reading the votes and it seems like the board's not going to support this. So I'm trying to understand what it is. That is going to be that is going to be provided. To to the board and to the to the broader community. And I didn't say there had to be any particular number. I'm just asking. Dr. Brown, what it what it is that his understanding of what. This board is committing to do. Separate from or in complimentary to or however you want to phrase it. In terms of our board goals.
Or Andrew, you could just read the preamble to the evaluation.
I'd like to, I'd like to have Dr. Brown answer it because I I'm interested in sort of like. Is he thinking where everybody's going to do maps and that's what?
Dr. Brown speak to this.
So again. I think as we're all acutely aware, we can plan for some things this year, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to happen. So I have to acknowledge the ambiguity of this situation. I would love to have had a PSAT window this fall. But in order to do so, students had to be in our high schools and they had to be present for that. And we're not in that space. So as we are able to perform assessment, as we are able to collect data, we will make it available to the board. We are getting ready to start a map window. Again, the the goal of that again is to be a literally a no stakes assessment. It's it's meant to help parents. Again, about 90% of parents across the country have expressed interest in knowing. Where their students are starting to begin to assess some learning loss and and to begin to. Plan forward and try to to figure out what they need to do to help their 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 students. Make most of this year as as we move forward. I know we have teams internally who are planning professional development, et cetera, based on on what we learn as well. As many of you pointed out, this is. An assessment environment that doesn't have the controls that we normally would expect to have. And so we don't know at this point in time what what assessment participation rates, et cetera, will be. So as data is available, we will make it available to the board. I will make it available to the board. I, to be honest, when I came here, I was thrilled that the board adopted these board goals. I was thrilled with the. The racial equity, explicit racial equity woven into those goals. And it's one that I want to see carried forward. But realistically, this year. I don't know how we can make comparable inferences to last year. And, you know, Ms. Brim Edwards, I I just don't understand how we can attach an evaluation or evaluative component. To the superintendent with no articulated target. And I'm not sure how to articulate a target at this point in time. But I can commit to make the data available as we have it.
Director Brim Edwards, I think one of the questions you're asking is like, so what are we doing with the data we receive? And Superintendent Guerrero. I know that you have. You know, already made adjustments based on information we're getting as far as strategy. So. Is there anything you'd like to say as far as speaking to how we will be using the data on our board goals as we move forward as an organization this year? And if not, that's okay. But I just thought this might be a place for you to share that.
I appreciate the conversation. It's one of the most important tasks that my seven bosses have. Is to come to some consensus around what you think my doing a good job. Should should be about. And by extension, that evaluation criteria rolls down the hill. So and I would want to be really careful. About coupling. I'm not sure what metrics or assessments or instruments we're talking about because we're still rolling those out across the system. Had we been on track. With with this pandemic not in interrupting things in a different place. To Director Scott's point, you know, I don't want to be held responsible for the air quality. And I certainly don't want our teachers. To feel accountable for formative assessments. We want to encourage them to use in a no stakes fashion. To try to make some informed decisions about where students are showing up. And where we as a central office might be able to steer resources and supports towards. So I agree with Dr. Brown. I know he had a rigorous conversation with Dr. Ray Hart, second only to to Dr. Brown, I think, preeminently on these topics. And so we'll we'll continue to be transparent about any metrics. That we are trying to institutionalize across the organization. I've spoken often about having a more robust performance management. Culture in the district and it takes time to institute those. But when it comes to student learning, I think the message we should be conveying right now. To to our students, our families and our educators is. Let let's take some snapshots of where we think or to get some information. That might lead to some discussions that might inform our lesson plans that might help. Inform where we need to put additional supports and intervention. So. I I'm not. It's not beyond me to sort of make sure that we're looking at those metrics. I just want to make sure I'm clear whether we're looking to couple those with. What are already a set of eight leadership standards that call out a lot of effort to to try to. Come out highly rated is is already a task in itself. And I think is already inclusive. Of a lot of the things that I'm hearing directors talk about.
Thank you, Superintendent. All right. If are there any other speeches for this amendment? I know we, like I said, we've had four against. Is there anything else we haven't raised that you feel is critical to speak into the space before we take this vote? Okay, we are going to now vote on the Brim Edwards amendment to the superintendent's evaluation. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying yes. All those opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No, no.
Do we have any abstentions? And Nathaniel, this is one of those things you don't vote on as the student rep. So we'll just wave at you instead. Okay, we are moving now. I know that Director DePass, you have an amendment you'd like to bring forward. So would you like to do so now? And we'll go ahead and move the whole, you can bring all of it as one.
You need to announce the result of the vote.
Oh, it was. One, four, and six against the Brim Edwards amendment. Thank you, Director Bailey. All right, Director DePass.
Yes, so thank you. I just had some, I would call them, I guess they're amendments or suggested additions or. Or changes in some of the leadership areas. And I do that because. I think it's important for us, again, this is one of the most important functions that that we're charged with. And I want to strengthen the language when I can. I also look at the critically at. This template and and who actually put it together. It's that we're in the School Boards Association. It's the template is great in the absence of anything else, but I I really do, as I'm looking through it. Think it could be straight strengthened. And so I'm going to suggest three amendments or three changes. One of them, and they're in different leadership standards, and I have shared them out.
I think they're in board books, but can I ask Ms. Bradshaw to display them for the public as well? So we can see what Director DePass is bringing forward.
Yeah, and I was gonna ask, thank you. I I'm also willing to share my screen. So leadership standard one is visionary leadership and I wanted to amend 1.4. To read to to add under makes progress on PPS's racial equity. And social justice strategy with a focus on the professional development strategies in the RESJ framework by adding three bullet points. Hiring and retaining teachers and principals of color is number one. Two. Demonstrating an increase in student outcomes for Black and Indigenous students. And three. Taking a holistic approach across the district in the review of our building names, our cultural icons, including statuary art and art and artifacts. And and adding under the visionary leadership. Demonstrate a focus on student achievement for Black and Indigenous students. Under leadership standard number three, inclusive district culture. I would amend 3.1 to read develops and maintains a supportive, equitable, culturally responsive and inclusive district culture. Adding. That actively recruits and retains teachers, administrators and central office staff of color. Under leadership standard number six, effective organizational management. Amend to add to add 6.5. So we're adding one more standard. Creates systems which track and improve the environmental sustainability of district practices. And I don't know, I mean. It's it's kind of a package, but it's just, I'm throwing it out there because I feel like as a board, we have not collectively. We haven't collectively called out that that racial equity and increasing the number hiring and retaining teachers of color is important. We we've talked around that, but I think that this is an opportunity now where especially due to our last discussion where we're not going to be. We tracking or evaluating on 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 outcomes for students. I think this is an opportunity for us to. To provide direction for the superintendent in in terms of what's important to us as a board.
All right, the DePass amendment is before us. Do we have a a motion and a second on this?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so Director Scott moves and. Director Brim Edwards seconds. Michelle, would you like to add anything else to speak for this?
No, not at this time.
Chair Lowry, can I?
Yeah.
Ask a question? So Director DePass, I I really appreciate this and and actually I like a lot of what's here because I think what it does is it. It takes the template and and refines it a little bit more towards things that that we as a board want to focus on and particularly that, you know. Hiring retaining teachers and principals of color is something that we we have talked about. So actually, and and also the environmental sustainability piece as well. So so all of it, I I actually, I I like, I I do, I do want to ask. And maybe we have board comments first and then the superintendent, but. One of the best practices around these evaluations is that we we do them collaboratively. And so I would like to ask the the superintendent's. Perspective, you know, on these, just just to see sort of again where he's where he's coming from in terms of this. The one question I had for you, though, and the only thing that gives me pause was in the leadership standard number one visionary leadership. Bullet number two that we're adding, demonstrating an increase in student outcomes for Black and Indigenous students. So. I agree, that is something I want to see. And I think the entire board, I don't want to speak for everybody, I think the entire board wants to see that. My only issue there, though, was was again, kind of relating to the conversation we just had, given that we don't know a baseline. For me, the question is an is an increase in in what? Is it is it increased from from last year's scores? Is it an increase from? Whatever baseline data we get this fall. And so that one makes me a little bit nervous versus hiring retaining teachers and principals of color, I feel like gives the superintendent flexibility to come back and say. Here are all the things I've done, right, to increase the diversity of staff and. Talk about those processes, talk about the future, and then talk about the outcomes, right? Did it happen? Did it not? Why not? You know, et cetera. So I I guess I just, it's just that second one. Again, I I I want to see that outcome. But my question is just, what specifically are you thinking about with bullet number two? But my question is just, what specifically are you thinking about with bullet number two?
Yeah, I think that I'm looking at these three bullet items under the visionary leadership. First of all, I want to thank you, and I failed to do that earlier for the work that you've put into this. I know this is, this is, it's a large, it's a large amount of work. So I want to appreciate you for the time you put into that, and I failed to do that earlier. These things are things that I think we're already doing. And in fact, I know we're already doing, the superintendent is already focused on. My point in calling it out was to be, for us as a board, to be specific about what we are asking for. When I look at the work that's happening at the district through the racial justice and social, racial equity and social justice lens, we, and we do this because it's comforting to white people. We talk around a lot about, you know, racial equity and it's a very flowery, you know, aspirational and visionary. And I think that my, my point tonight in bringing this forward is to, for us as a governing body, to be specific about what we're asking and to say that this is important to us also. The superintendent has already, is already doing much of this and is very important to him. But for us as the bosses or, you know, the board, I think it's important for us to spell it out. It's important for us, for the community to see that we care about these things. And to your point about demonstrating an increase in student outcomes, we're already somewhat focused on that. And I don't have, I understand what you're saying about the baseline. I think that that's, we don't have a baseline for this year. But I think that we do know in generally that Black and Indigenous students aren't performing as well, or we're not getting to them as readily. And I want to spell out that, I want to be very specific as a board, that this is very important to us. We can't let those students slide, recognizing that we're in a very, we're just in a crazy time right now. I mean, everyone's going to slide. But I think that we need to still elevate and keep those students that are the most underserved front and center and send a message that this is important to us.
So very quick comment, and I'll turn it over to Chair Lowry, I promise. I would be more comfortable if the second bullet said focusing on student outcomes for Black and Indigenous students. Because that to me allows the superintendent to talk about how has he focused on that? What have we achieved? And us as a board in evaluating, do we think that focus has been there? Again, I just worry that the demonstrated increase sort of says there's a baseline that we're measuring off of. But I'll be quiet now, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And this is, I should have said, open for discussion. I've changed it in my draft document to focusing. I agree with you as a former evaluator that if you don't have anything to evaluate against, it's kind of meaningless. But I also feel like it's important to have it in black and white. So I've changed the word to focusing rather than demonstrating based on your comment.
You'll take that as a friendly amendment that will move that from, so your amendment will take the friendly amendment that Director Scott made and change number two under 1.4 to be focusing on an increase in student outcomes instead of demonstrate, Director DePasso?
Yeah, yes, that's correct.
So we will accept that friendly amendment, and that means we don't need to vote on it. Superintendent Guerrero, Director Scott asked Superintendent Guerrero to respond. So I'm going to ask him to do that, and then we'll come back to the board for discussion.
I think we can vote on the friendly amendment.
Do we need to vote, John, on the friendly amendment?
Yeah, I would. I think that's best practice.
So we will vote on.
Hang on, can I interject here?
Yes.
So if we're going to amend the number two bullet point, does that make the addition of a 1.5? I mean, I think it obviates the need for a 1.5.
So I would suggest that we delete two and just set 1.5 as its own because that carries more weight than having it be a two. That would be my friendly amendment.
I agree.
So maybe just a slightly different point of view on that is that number 1.5 doesn't talk about an increase, it just talks about focusing on student achievement. And to me, part of the beauty of number two was it's expressing like our, you know, goal, which is an increase in student outcomes.
But the problem remains the same, that we have no way of measuring in any reliable way.
So could we say demonstrate a focus on increasing student outcomes for Black and Indigenous students and have that be 1.5?
I'm, I like that.
So.
And removing bullet point two.
Yes, remove bullet point two and say demonstrate a focus on increasing student outcomes for Black and Indigenous students.
Okay, if we're copy editing, instead of increase, can we make it improve? Because there are student outcomes that we want to improve that are not necessarily quantifiable.
Director DePasso, how do you feel about that one?
I think that's a great addition. Thank you, Director Moore.
Okay.
I'm very frustrated trying to edit Kara's screen. It's not working.
Yes, and Kara is catching all of these amendments, so she's got it for us. Maybe not on this screen, but in her, in her notes. So we are going to, the group amendment to Director DePasso's amendment on this moment is to delete bullet point, or to delete number two under 1.4 and to amend 1.5 or add 1.5 saying demonstrate an, demonstrate a focus on increasing student outcomes, or improving, sorry.
Improving.
Straight a focus on improving student outcomes for Black and Indigenous students. Okay, do I have a motion on that amendment?
So moved.
Second, anyone second it? So Director Konstant moves and Director Bailey seconds. Do we have any more discussion on this amendment to the DePasso amendment? All right, all in favor, please respond by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Okay, the amendment to the DePasso amendment passes. Director, or sorry, Superintendent Guerrero, did you want to answer Director Scott's question about your response to any of these amendments? As how they would be functional for you to use as benchmarks for your achievement this year?
Well, I wouldn't disagree on the objectives. Of course, for example, I want to see a workforce that's as diverse and representative of the student demographic that we serve. As we've learned over the last three years, we also know that there isn't sort of the apparatus necessarily statewide to make sure that candidate pools are sufficient to make sure all school districts. And this is a conversation I have on a frequent basis with my colleagues. And so we've engaged in a lot of behind the curtain work to build out career pathways and human capital pipelines and create support mechanisms to encourage diversity there. An initial example of that is our parent-to-teacher program, for example, to get a lot of our classified employees of color teaching credentials, so they can be leading their own classrooms after sometimes a long time being in a support role. So that's an example. We've been bringing, working with the higher ed collaborative of institutions in the region, you know, to talk about these same issues. We can't hire them if they don't exist in the graduate programs. And so, and we can't recruit our way out of this issue. So, you know, it's, it's, it's the pleasure of the board to decide what you think a successful year will look like. I'll tell you to devise action plans that are aggressive. That may require resources, so don't be surprised if I come back to you with an amendment if, to do, to do these things to an adequate level. But I just, I just, I know that the board understands that the breadth and scale of what you hope that as a leader I accomplish for you, besides getting through this pandemic, rolling students back in, engage in an enrollment balancing process, keep construction moving, engage in formal curriculum adoptions, keep institutionalizing metrics across the district. I can keep going down the list. So it is a tall order, I'm all for a challenge. But I also, I also know that we can't do a decade of work in, in a school year when we're already not even able to be in our buildings.
It's not like you're already doing some of the work that Director DePasso is lifting up. And I think, like she said, it's really important to the community to have that in black and white. And like you said, it's a lot behind the curtain so that people actually know what we're doing and where the opportunities lie.
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a great public dialogue to have what those challenges and constraints have been historically and how we're trying to break down those barriers and ease the hoops that oftentimes candidates and talent have in being well postured to be competitive for positions in our school system. So I think it's a, it's a great emphasis and a focus to have. We have it already, and it's one we need to keep working on.
Thank you, and we'll support you in doing the work. And absolutely, this work needs to be resourced. We can't pull time or money, for that matter, out of thin air, especially this year. I'm next. Thank you.
Are there any further comments on the DePasso amendment? The amended DePasso amendment, I should say. All right, we are going to now vote on the DePasso amendment. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? All right, the DePasso amendment passes seven to zero. We are now back to the main motion before us, the superintendent's evaluation. Is there any further discussion on the superintendent's evaluation? Template.
I'm going to be a no vote. I don't support decoupling the student outcomes from the superintendent's evaluation. And I appreciate the caveats and the information, Dr. Brown, that you provided. And I know from talking to a lot of parents that this is really a huge concern, that progress won't be made, that there may be a year of lost learning. And so I, my preference would be to have student outcomes to keep the focus on. And I understand that other boards members may have a different point of view, so I accept that.
I just want to comment that I don't think there were any board members who expressed a different point of view about student outcomes and that that's very clearly embedded in our board goals. So let's be really clear in what we're telegraphing to the public, which is that we're talking about tying it to, tying uncertain metrics to a performance evaluation. We're not talking about whether or not we're committed to seeing growth for our children.
I want to really echo that. I think that's, it's a mischaracterization to say we're decoupling. We're not. Director Brim Edwards amendment did not bring forward a specific metric that which we could tie a superintendent's evaluation to, which is why I didn't support it. But I want to be really clear, we are very focused on student outcomes. That data will be available, it will be publicly discussed, it will be transparent. That is something this district and this board is focused on and will continue to be focused on moving forward.
Any further comments about the superintendent's evaluation before we vote? I again want to thank Director Scott for the huge amount of work he did on this and for Director Brim Edwards and Director DePasso, for Director Konstant for doing some additional work to get information from other districts and to ask a lot of questions and to make some amendments and to Dr. Brown for always being available to help us understand, you know, performance management and evaluation tools. So I still remember your first meeting with us, and I'm proud of the fact that we have not let up in the intensity of our demands of you in any of these board meetings. So your first meeting was a good indicator of what it was going to be like for you in Portland. All right, I think we're ready to vote. So we will vote now on Resolution 6179, adoption of the superintendent's goals for 2020, 21. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no.
No.
Are there any abstentions? Resolution 6179 is approved by a vote of six to one. All right, we are at the end of our time together, almost. We've got conference and committee reports. I did want to let you know that there was some behind the scenes maneuvering and our community engagement folks are going to meet with us another time. So we will just be doing our climate justice curriculum tonight. So that means our learning session will be a little shorter than intended. So we can all get to sleep at a decent hour. Okay, committee reports. I know that we've got policy audit and bond. So let's see who my script says is first. Rita, please provide your policy committee update.
We had a policy committee meeting a couple of weeks ago. We talked about a revision of the preservation, maintenance and disposition of district property policy. And we talked about the complaint policy reviewing how it's worked over the last two years and considering some staff recommendations for amendments going forward. We made no decision. It will be coming back to the committee at our next meeting on October 5th. We will also be talking at the next meeting about a work plan for the district. We have a very long list of potential policy work that we can be doing. It's probably substantially longer than we can reasonably expect to accomplish. So we have to do some prioritization. And we will know at the end of that meeting, at least the shortlist for what policies we'll be taking up that we know of. I mean, things will come up over the course of the year. And hopefully some potential timeline for when we'll be talking about those things. That's all.
Okay, Audit Committee is next. Director Brim Edwards.
Would you go to Director DePasso first? I'm just pulling up the, some information.
Certainly, Director DePasso.
Sure, so the School Improvement Bond Committee met several days ago now, last week. And we had two updates from the Bond Accountability Committee, their quarterly report. We had an Office of School Management report. We tabled, which I think is tradition, the Subcommittee Charter. I asked permission if we could table it because we had run out of time. I was reminded that it's been tabled at every meeting for the last amount of time. We discussed a committee schedule. Most importantly, we have some upcoming openings on the Bond, on the School Improvement Bond Committee. We have three people terming off, and we have a chair position open. We've decided to use a form that I drafted tailored to, you know, asking for the skills that are needed on that committee. Also voluntarily asking respondents to report their gender, race, some of those demographic information, so we can say that we, you know, are trying to increase the diversity on that, on that committee. We're in the process of setting a regular meeting schedule that'll be about every six weeks. Looking for input from the community. Again, we have three spots open, including a chair position upcoming, and we're recruiting actively for those positions currently.
Michelle, I'd like to just add one thing to that report from our committee meeting, which is, to the board members that weren't there, I would encourage you to look on Board Book for the materials that came forward from the Office of School Modernization and the Bond Accountability Committee. It was their quarterly reports, which no longer come to the full board. And one of the issues which I intend to follow up on in some form or another is some pretty disturbing news from the OSM dashboard about our minority women in small business enterprise contracting statistics. We had been doing so well through the 2012 bond and the early stages of 2017. And now we are well below our goals and without, you know, with all the major subcontracts on Madison, for example, basically left. So we need to do some work figuring out how that happened, what went wrong, what our relationships and culture is that may be having an impact on that. And I encourage everybody to take a closer look at those figures.
Thank you for bringing that forward. That's, the utilization rate is something that I reported on when I worked for Metro. And I've been involved in this, you know, for 25 years, maybe just 20, I don't know, maybe 30. It's really important that we, as a public institution, you know, try to meet those aspirational goals of WESB participation, minority women in firms. And I think that our numbers are low probably for a couple of reasons. One is that we haven't focused on it. And the second may be that the, just the sheer amount of work that happened in, you know, Q1, Q2 of this year and Q4 of last year, public works projects have really, you know, taken available contractors that could be bidding on our work. But, but I think we can do better.
All right, Director Brim Edwards, do you have your report on the audit committee?
I, I do. Thank you. So we had an audit committee meeting last week and we received from the Office of the Internal Performance Auditor, an update on the ACH audit and the P car, P car audit. Of course, the ACH audit came out of, that was a request from district staff to have an audit after the fraudulent transaction that occurred over a year ago. That's almost completed. And then same thing with the P card audit, that was on the audit calendar and is moving ahead. We also worked through the audit committee calendar. And we have an opening, a community, a community opening on the position open on the audit committee. And we discussed updating the sort of solicitation for community participation. It had been very focused just on whether you had an auditing background and the sense that we wanted candidates that might bring a diverse set of skills or diverse perspective. So I want to thank Director De Pos and Roseanne Powell, who are going to get us a modified description back. And then we'll circulate it to the board. And if people want to share it with people who you think might be interested in serving on the audit committee. I know it's a high profile, very attractive community position. So we'll have that opening and then we'll bring it to the full board because the full board actually does the appointment to the audit committee. And the person that's cycling off is Kari Guy, who is a PPS parent, but also works for the city of Portland. And the auditing officer is at, one of the managers, she's brought valuable expertise and we're sorry to see her leave the committee, but she has offered to continue to be a resource, both to our internal performance auditors and to and to the committee itself. And then finally, the last item of discussion we had was around the Secretary of State's, the audit and the basically scorecard of work that we need to have underway. As I've stated before, this is something that needs the full board attention because there is a number of the findings, including number 26, which is all, which has five or six different parts, which is all board responsibilities, not necessarily the audit committee. And that we need to, we've got a template and as a board, we need to just walk through to see if we are okay and believe the district is on track and on target, or they've completed the work that we're supposed to oversee. So that's, I just want to highlight that because I do think we're over a year out. We got to pass this spring from the Secretary of State's office about the return for the follow-up. And we just need to be prepared that we've done our work as, this is as the board staff has fully done that. And we had Dr. Bird and Dr. Quayar. No, is that right? We definitely had Dr. Bird speak to, I'm sorry, Dr. Valentino, some of the changes that they've made or adjustments they've made in terms of fulfilling the recommendations. So just a future work at agenda item for the full board. That's it.
Great, thank you. I know that Director Moore, you wanted to do a quick commercial for CBRC.
Yes, we have a number of openings on the Community Budget Review Committee. We are actively soliciting applications even as we speak. The deadline is the end of September. If you're interested, I, it's, it's a great committee to be on. You learn a lot about PPS. I was known for six years, as was Chair Lowry too. And it's, it's a really interesting committee to be on. And I encourage everybody who's even vaguely interested to go to the Community Budget Review Committee webpage at pps.net and get your application in ASAP.
All right, any other committee or conference reports that we need to have before us?
All right, well, I am going to officially adjourn our session. The next meeting of the board will be held October sixth at 6:00 PM. And this meeting is now adjourned. We're going to take a five minute break till 9:25 and then we'll be back here for our study session on climate change curriculum. Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Chair Lowry, are we in the same room?